Let me know when.
There you go.
Okay, we're live. Good morning. This is the New York City Board of Standards and Appeals Public Review Session for April 12th, 2020, 2021, 10:00 AM session. There is no public testimony during the review session. The following cases have requested adjournments. Item number one, 2018, 26 BZ, 79-03 Roosevelt Avenue, Queens. Item number two, 2019, 67 BZ, 2781 Quill Street, Brooklyn. Item number three, 2019, 95 BZ, 19 Masbeth Avenue, Brooklyn. 2025, 20, 20, 25 BZ, 14230 13th Avenue, Queens. Item number five is 2019, 298 BZ, 506 West 181st Street, Manhattan. And the following application is postponed. Item number six, 75884 BZ, 1444 Clove Road, Staten Island.
But with that one, I just want to say this is postponed because of failure to provide notice. So when we reschedule for the hearing, we need to make sure that a hearing notice goes out.
New notice.
Because there was no, no, no notice provided by the applicant.
Okay. Decision items. Item number seven, 67753 BZ, 6128 Fresh Metal Lane, Queens.
Okay, the applicant submitted an operational plan, the terms of which should be included as a condition of approval in the resolution. The plan, though, does not agree to conduct, not to conduct repairs or any other work outside of the building, which is really the specific thing that we needed. So I actually wanted to talk about with the commissioners whether we get them to actually sign a document or yeah. Kurt, go ahead.
It's Chase. The project manager stated that they spoke to the applicant team and they have revised their operational plan to prevent any outdoor repair. Seen it yet, but I did see the email from the project manager stating that the applicant agreed to that condition.
Oh, okay. In writing? Jaleen? Did the applicant agree in writing?
I haven't seen a new operational plan. I just saw that the project manager spoke to the applicant last week and they agreed with the condition. I don't know if they submitted a new operational plan, but we'll hear from the project manager.
Yeah, Jaleen, did, did they submit something in write? Is it Jaleen's case?
Yes.
Yeah. Did they submit?
67753 BZ, Jaleen.
They submitted. Yeah. Well, let me, let me go on while she's looking through her notes to see whether they submitted something in writing. Okay. So at the very least, though, our conditions will state that there is no work to be done outside of the building. That's the rule about all, not just variance sites, but all repair sites. You're not allowed to have any kind of activity going on outside of a building like that. The operational plan also states that they will use only water-based paints and there's a spray booth permit. However, I do have to say that like when I was looking at the folder for just kind of this final look, I have, I noted a letter from February 20th from the immediate neighbor to the rear that reads, I won't read their name aloud, but they're the neighbor to the immediate rear. "We're the owners of the property at 61-3373rd Street. I write this statement because we object to the auto repair shop application. This repair store behind our house produces hazardous gas during their painting and spraying, which does great harm to our family's health. We have children and seniors in the house who are vulnerable to the gases. The toxic gas makes our family dizzy and short of breath. In addition to harming our family's health, it also harms the health of the whole community. We strongly object to this business continued operation." So my understanding is that for one, based on photographs, there is a spray booth. They showed us an image of a spray booth. However, and spray booths, I actually have experience getting permits for a spray booth. Spray booth regulations are very strict and they're required to have pretty elaborate ventilation systems that, that clean the exhaust before it actually is released into the air. Plus it has to be directed in a certain way, so not towards residences, right? So one of the things that I noted about the spray booth they showed us was that it's a, it's a room inside of the building with big doors, which makes sense. You're driving the car inside of this big door room. However, if the workers don't close the doors and leave the door to the garage open while they work, the spray booth has no effect, right? So that's one thing. The other is there's an open area directly adjacent to our site, our subject site, that's on Lot 52, which is owned by the owner of this site. And that lot doesn't have any barrier and any, or anything between the residential property owner and this site. There's nothing. As far as I can tell, maybe it's a fence, but it's not an opaque fence or anything like that. So the other possibility is there's spraying going on outside the building. I don't know which of those things, but if a spray booth is effective, this neighbor should not be smelling any of the fumes. So what I would like to do is have our compliance officer, Ted Ricketts, go call DEP. I think that was your, your domain, right? Call DEP and request an inspection of the subject site and the adjacent Lot 52. It's all part of the same business, so you won't be able to tell which lot is which. It's all part of the same. I think it's called Carriage House Body Shop and, and inspect. Yeah, Ted has his hand up and then Commissioner Sheta.
Good morning, Board. As far as inspection there, the inspections that I conducted with 311-based complaints, I am not sure you can request an inspection from DEP. I'll reach out and see what they say.
Okay, how, how do you get a, how do you get an inspection then?
Those were complaints from 311 that were generated.
So, well, I mean, it's kind of backwards, but we could file 311 complaint, but we should be able to have someone who we can.
As an interagency, yeah.
Yeah, so we, we'll, there'll be somebody we can contact for that. So let's have a conversation after for how to reach out to DEP. Commissioner Sheta.
I would, I would suggest two things because I did, I did look at the types of paints that are used for cars and that the search I did says that the majority of the paints are water-based. But since the majority, not all of the paints are water-based, sometimes you could use some sort of other chemical one, especially the clear coat they, they use at the end. I believe it's polyurethane. This, this is kind of like environmentally tough to smell and, and it's, it's tough to handle during like painting and, and like applying to a car. So I, I believe we cannot stay there 24/7 to make sure that they are painting inside.
No.
My suggestion is to limit painting outside at areas that painting could impact adjacent properties. I would suggest.
There's no, you're not allowed to paint outside of the spray booth. That's the law.
I totally understand, but my point is we cannot send somebody to stay or put a camera monitor 24/7. It's impossible.
Right.
So that other like way to prevent it is to have him put something physical. It's like at locations that paint could be done at or within to prevent them from doing that. Like, like put some, some sort of physical barrier, like planting, like, like whatever. I, I don't know, but if, if there is an area that we believe that painting could be done at, they, they, we, we gotta make sure they have to prove it to us that they are not going to be not using it, but able to use it by putting something there. I don't know what that could be, but I, I believe this is, this is the, like, the short answer to that.
Okay, can you, before we, can you take a look at the site plan and then for this site and, and then get back to it because I, I'm not sure if you visualize what the site layout is. The site that we're looking at is entirely occupied by a building against the property line. And so there isn't any place to cordon off. The site adjacent, which is not the site that's under our review, even though it's owned by the same owner and it's the same business. So it makes this quite complicated. It's a legal non-conforming use. That site has an area that's completely open that we can't control because we don't have jurisdiction. So other than the owner agreeing to erect another spray booth or erect a building adjacent to that site, which we can't control, that the owner just has to agree. I don't actually know what else to do other than a DEP inspection. There's other hands up, so I'm going to go in order of hands up. So Commissioner Shabata.
I think that this might just be a ventilation system issue. They're probably closing the spray booths because it makes a lot more sense to close the doors when you're spraying a car. But the ventilation, the exhaust of that spray booth, it's probably going out of their vents and going into the neighbors. If they can upgrade and redirect, that might solve that problem.
But so if it, but the issue is if it complies with code, then, then what do we do? Because so I think that, that's why a conversation with DEP seems like the only.
I agree entirely, but I, I just, I think the focus, they, they should probably, I think it makes more sense for them to be spray painting inside because you get a better, it just looks better, you know? You don't want the particles in the air that go into the paint and make it a bad paint job. So it's more likely than not that they are closing the doors, they are painting inside. Unless anyone's seen, we have notes of that's anyone's seen the paint outside, but I, I think the focus should probably be for DP to make sure to go through the, if we can advise them anything, I think that we should say, hey, take a look at the vents, see if they're working properly and maybe, maybe a redirection might, 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 might suit the best.
Madam Chair, are we reopening this?
So far, we're just talking, so let's just, and then with, and there's comments, so let me just go through that. Then Chase, Chase Fine.
So I just spoke to Jaleen. The applicant did send in a new operational plan on April 5th, adding, "All work conducted on vehicles shall take place inside the building on the property. No repair work of any kind is permitted outside of the building." The operational plan also does commit to all spray painting on the property be limited to water-based paint.
Right.
I can suggest the resolution will most definitely include all relevant language from this operational plan and the conditions can include relevant language as well.
Okay, okay, thank you. It's weird. So was, is that in share port? I didn't.
It was sent to submit. It hasn't been uploaded. Jaleen talking to Vincent right now to make sure it gets into share.
That's, so that's why we didn't see it. Okay, because April 5th was a little bit of a while ago, so. Commissioner Sean, Vice Chair Shonda.
I echo Commissioner Shabata's. That was exactly my suggestion.
About the ventilation?
Ventilation, yeah.
So. Yeah.
Yeah. I actually had another question and that is based on the photos that's been provided. There's a little bit of an inconsistency in the way the signage has been provided with regards to no, no parking on sidewalk. Because if you look at some photos, you see the sign and in some photos on the same fence line, you do not. So I'm, I'm not sure if it's being moved. It's a more of a temporary sign or than a permanent sign. So they need to ensure that the sign is more permanent and it should say no parking on the sidewalk. So if you say no parking, people may think it means no parking on the curb cut. It really is meant for no parking on the sidewalk.
Right.
So that should be much more clearly stated and that can be part of the condition also.
Right. So yeah, I had more comments. I was, you know, the focus was on what to do about these fumes. So just to finish my, my comments also, with respect to the sign, the no parking signs need to be changed to no parking on sidewalk and specifically violators will be towed at their expense. That's our standard no parking on sidewalk sign. So that has to be changed and should be part of the conditions. Also, because we were waiting for the certificate of occupancy to be updated, I did see online that an alteration type one to change, a no work alteration type one to change the C of O was created and approved like as far back as 2018. So basically all that's left really is this decision and a couple of other little things that are small. So but I, I want to say that because the site is, is a problematic site and this thing with the with the fumes and the fact of the cars awaiting service being parked on the street and on the sidewalk. My recommendation is that we give it a short leash. And so I would like comments on that as well. So, so continuing on. So Vice Chair Shonda, do you want to pick up on the short?
No, I agree with you. I think we should give it a short leash with these additional conditions imposed.
Okay, so, so in terms of a short leash, are we talking about like two years and then, and they come back for compliance?
Last time was also two years, right?
Yeah, I don't remember actually. Yeah, because it's a C of O. They have two years to obtain the C of O, right? And then I think that's what they're asking for, if I remember the cover letter.
Right.
So, okay.
And given that there's a health issue associated with it, I would, I would want to give it a two-year too, to make sure that the ventilation is addressed.
Okay. Okay. Commissioner Ali Brown?
I'm not opposed to a shorter term for compliance issues. I think that it's most probably a ventilation issue. I believe that they are basically operating within their, their previous conditions. I don't believe they're doing any spraying outdoors. I don't believe anybody would spray outdoors because the spraying needs to be contained, not only to protect people outside, but also to protect the paint job. You're not going to spray outdoors when wet paint can catch every speck of dirt, twig and whatever and totally ruin your paint job. It just doesn't make sense from a business standpoint. So I don't think they're spraying outside. So I think that the proper people to actually monitor this would be DEP because they understand the spraying operation better than us. They understand the chemicals that are used in water-based versus oil-based paints that we don't really understand. And so I'm willing to refer it out to them to regulate. And for us, if you want to keep them on a short leash to ensure that the things that are within our control are taken care of, I'm not opposed to that. And that is like working on cars outdoors, parking on the sidewalk, that kind of thing. Then that would be fine with me.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Sheta.
Yeah, I would be, I would be okay with a short leash for two years. That would give them a chance to prove it to us that they are complying. And if, if there is no issue within that two-year window, I believe that would be motivating to grant probably next time at a larger period of time.
Thank you. Commissioner Shabata.
I, I agree with the, with all commissioners, yeah.
Okay. Okay, then. So based on that, then I'd like to make a motion to grant on the following conditions and for it's a, for a two-year term. It's, the conditions are that they obtain the CO within two years and it doesn't seem like there's any reason why they can't. No pot parking of tow trucks or cars awaiting service on the streets or sidewalks. And also and to obviously operate the spray booth in compliance with DEP regulations. And also the, the rest of the conditions that are outlaid described in the operational plan that talks about the hours of operation and how they're going to deter the parking on the sidewalk and so on. That should be incorporated into the resolution. And also on condition that the signs on the sidewalk are changed to no parking on sidewalk violators will be towed at their own expense. And then the other thing that I wanted to point out is which I've mentioned in a couple of the prior hearings. We had wanted back in 2018, so yeah, it was a two-year leash, right? We had wanted the resolution to clarify the relationship between this site and the adjacent one on Lot 52, which is part of the same business, which is a non-conform, a legal non-conforming use since the, it's been non-conforming since at least the 1950s. So we wanted to clarify that it's held in common ownership and has a certificate of occupancy for automotive repair. So I'd like the resolution to clarify why that keeps showing up on all the drawings because it's confusing, you know? We look at, we look at what's before us and then we have to kind of ignore that other part. And at one point, there was a fence between those two, which the board agreed a couple of decisions ago to allow to be removed because it's all part of the same business. So just so that future boards and/or in two years, it's not another question of why are we looking at Lot 52? Okay? Got that, Chase?
Yep, thank you.
Okay, so based on that, a motion to grant.
Chair Pomada?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Otley Brown?
You're muted.
Muted.
Muted, muted. She's trying to unmute. It's not working so far.
Hope a sign say, oh, yes.
You can go like this.
Okay.
We acknowledge that she was thumbs up on this one and having trouble figuring out what's going on with the mute. Uh-oh.
Commissioner Sheta?
Aye.
Commissioner Shabata?
There we go.
Commissioner Otley Brown?
Aye.
Yay. Thank you.
Item number eight, 24503 BZ, 160-11 Willets Point Boulevard, Queens.
Okay, as hard as it will be to believe, we actually have the drawings completely in order now saying all the things they're supposed to be saying. And even the applicant went back in the last couple of weeks to correct the luminous spread diagram, which was showing more than zero lumens over the property line. They actually went back onto the site and adjusted some of the light fixtures.
Yes.
And, and well, let's say conceptually adjusted because it's going to be, this is a renovation site. But they're going to be removing two of the poles that are right up against the property line and locating another one much closer to the building, which has the, the new LED lights seem to be better controlled in terms of spread. You can kind of direct them more down. So they're going to be using that instead. So now we have zero lumen spread on the property. So there is an operational plan that was provided that was, as I mentioned before, kind of casually written by the owner. And so I'd like our council to sort of distill its points about operations. It's not a condition, but it's just sort of, they discuss how they're going to operate. So it says, "One of the challenges of fast service time is order intake. We can't start preparing food until the order is submitted. Dual order points, commonly called a side-by-side or tandem, allow us to take orders simultaneously to speed up the order intake." So, so dual order points is one of the things that we understand they're going to be using for speeding up intake because that's actually been the issue about too many cars lined up in the street and not enough room on the sort of reservoir lane. That, that's one that I'd like to have pointed out. Menu simplification. And it says, "Changes have been made to the menu to simplify and help speed up the ordering and production process." That one, I don't really know if we want to mess with them. Have an understanding about menus because menus change, so maybe we leave that out. But mobile order pay and the McDonald's mobile app. McDonald's mobile app allows customers to place orders on or off-site and select how they want to be served. So, so that would be something that's included in our understanding of how they're speeding up throughput essentially. So I'd like that to be incorporated into the discussion in the resolution. And then in terms of this is a question to commissioners. The, the last resolution had the hours of operation of the drive-through facility Sunday through Thursday from 6:00 AM to 12:00 AM and Friday and Saturday from 6:00 AM to 1:00 AM. I'm asking in light of that other McDonald's case where the, the noise from the drive-through can be very disturbing. We had talked a few hearings ago about reducing the hours of operation at so late at night to something more like 10:00 or 11:00 PM, something like that. And I'd like commissioners' comments on that as opposed to just leaving it to the 12:00 AM and 1:00 AM hours, which is next to residence. Then the other thing is we, what we didn't get on the plans that I didn't notice until Friday or something is we didn't get a turn-off radio and respect neighbor sign, which is now our sort of standard. So.
Sorry, missed that.
No, I missed it too. I was so, you know, whatever. There were so many other things we're looking at. So that, that'll be one of the conditions that they have to install signs at the drive-through that say turn off radio and respect neighbors. And then so some of the conditions would be the following, that I'd like people, everybody to comment on what I'm commenting on, saying that the menu board shall not be audible from residential property. Landscaping and fencing to be maintained in first-class condition at all times. Trash to be stored only in the fenced enclosed area. Signs indicating overflow parking at the rear to be maintained that's located on the rear near that trash enclosure. The drive-through access to have, must remain, drive-through access to the drive-through must remain within the C1-2 district boundary lines as extended by BSA calendar number 245-03BZ. And then the last point is the, the time, the measurement of time, this is a five-year limited special permit. So my recommendation is that due to essentially what I characterize as poor representation, this was a very, very long process. And so I think that we could start the five-year term starting now as opposed to starting back when the last term expired. The owner has been cooperative and I know has suffered quite a lot through this hearing. So this process. So those are my comments and I, I like your opinions on the, the hours. So Vice Chair Shonda.
I think, I do think this site is different from the other McDonald's site. Here, the neighbors have all along indicated that they have had no issues with this facility. And it is a buffer, a dense buffer, which we have further enhanced through additional landscaping. So I am okay with this area being the, the proposed hours of operations. With regards to the extension hours, I think that's, that's very good that we will start from the day of the approval.
It's not the extension of hours, it's extension of term.
Sorry, extension of term and, and the, yeah.
Okay.
All the time elements are jumbling in my head.
Okay, Commissioner Otley Brown?
For similar reasons, as Vice Chair, I agree that the hours of operations should remain as they were previously. And I have no objection to setting the term starting with our approval date and then going forward for five years.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Sheta.
Thank you, Chair. I'm, I'm okay with the, the term starting from the approval date, but before that, I, I do have. But before that, I I do have another concern, actually, based on the drawings that were submitted. Uh, the last submission, the one that's um, submitted April twelve, I believe. Uh, looking at Willetts points on Google Maps, and I've been to like this area like many times before. Willetts points is still still two way uh, street, right? It it's not changing. So if you look at the um, maneuverability plan. I'm I'm not sure if this maneuverability plan is is not like calling for crossing a double double solid. From Willetts points when turning into the site. If if you look at B S A dash oh oh three point zero zero. That was submitted April twelve, I believe.
No.
April eight, April eight, almost, yeah, April eight.
Thanks, yeah.
Yeah, I can, I can probably.
Yeah, maybe show it on the screen. I can't get there.
Yeah, 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 I I will, I will. Yeah. Do you do you see this plan?
Yes.
Yes, I I understand this car, this car is coming from that way, which is the natural flow of Willetts points coming from this way. And then into the site, but for this, these two cars. First of all, they shouldn't be coming from here. They should be coming from the other side.
Yeah.
And 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 when turning into the side, this is illegal. I'm not sure if we can take a plan like this, that's calling for an illegal.
So.
Maneuver into the side.
So the thing is, um, of course, we don't control the traffic regulations, right? So to the extent that people are crossing over a double line, that's not our domain, right? The entrance to the drive through is there, right? And whether they do the right thing, which is argued because there's a double line, I don't know what the rule is. Are you allowed to cross over a double line at all? Not to go to a place like to go to a driveway, so you have to drive all the way around the block.
I got like two tickets for that.
Yeah, okay, so there you go. So um, so if they're breaking the law, that's actually traffic enforcement's job, right? Uh, what's kind of crazy about this is that the engineer who did this drawing didn't know that. Didn't observe that the maneuverability diagram is maneuvering to show the breaking of a law, right? But um, because it's not aware on this drawing of a double line, it's just showing cars, right? But if we just look at the maneuvering of coming in the correct direction. Then it the turn up to the drive up the driveway works, right? It's not a double, is it a double line? Oh, it's a double.
There it is, yeah.
Yeah.
It's a double yellow solid, yes.
A double yellow solid, okay. So but again, so I want to say that if people break the law to go into whatever it is they want to do, this is in our domain. We can't stop them from breaking the law. That's the entrance, no matter what, from the correct direction. So you can't say, um, you can't allow it. Yeah, Tony.
So do we want to eliminate that plan from our approvals?
You're afraid that it's giving some sort of inference that you can, we can do that, we can just take it out of the set.
I don't know, maybe that's that's a suggestion. I I don't know.
Yeah, I don't know, cause I'm not sure what you're concerned about. We're not advocating people breaking the law to come into the McDonald's. If they do that, that's their own ticket, right?
No, I I believe we've we've discussed previously the separation of the drive through from like the by the cars that's going to be dining. Uh, in or like shopping from inside the store. Uh, we we discussed this during the past probably two hearings, like very, very uh, like detail. And 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 it we said in order to do that, they have like to put bowlers, they have to divide. The two lanes will make it one for this and one for that. But when when we ended up, like it it's for me submitting this maneuverability plan. The reason for submitting this is to mitigate our concerns and to respond to our discussions previously. If an applicant is going to submit to us something in response to our concern, that's going to be based on something illegal. We shouldn't take that.
Okay. So that, you know, my comment before about feeling sorry for the owner for poor representation, this fits right into that. And I don't want to drag this on anymore. So I feel better about just removing or at Xing out on, we could even do something like this. Accept the drawing, but we X out the maneuverability ourselves. You can do that on a PDF, right? So that you don't see cars coming in from that direction. We could even write on the PDF, you know, illegal approach and 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 then keep it in the set, something like that, right? Or or just take it out of the set.
I I would.
I think take it out of the set.
Well, take it out of the set because I can't stand the idea that because the applicants, the owners representatives don't even know that they're not supposed to make an illegal turn, they're traffic consultants, right? An illegal turn over a double yellow and they show it on the drawings. I mean, that's what's been going on this whole time.
Yeah.
I can't believe you're showing that on the drawing, whatever the that is, right? So enough already, okay?
Honestly, when I saw this, I was like scratching my head. I I I was like, no, it's it's not possible. It's prepared by somebody who should like should know what he's doing, but maybe maybe they have a response to that.
Well, we don't need to have a response because it's illegal to cross the double yellow. All the drivers in the room agree, right? So not that we're the traffic cops, but if you all have gotten tickets and you know you're not supposed to do that. And it's good I'm not a driver because maybe I wouldn't know I'm not supposed to do that.
Do you want to put a site, do you want to put a citation in the in the resume maybe though? Uh, you getting, are we are we getting?
Because it's traffic law. We don't need to put this, I mean, when we have parking on the sidewalk, that's a different subject. But here you have to obey the traffic laws. You can't go in the wrong direction.
Okay.
So, okay, I appreciate this though, because I I have to admit, I saw that also as being weird. But I didn't remember there was a double yellow. I just saw the the maneuvering was weird. So they were driving, they were going to hit each other in traffic. So. All right, so that, do you have any other comments besides that? Okay.
Thank you.
Commissioner Shabata.
Jella, to just.
Oh, Jella has her hand up. I didn't see. Let me look at your from Commissioner Shabata and then we'll hear from Jella, okay?
Okay.
Uh, thank you, Chair. Um, I uh, I'm okay with the five year starting on our approval. And for reasons already stated, I take no exception to the hours. Uh, with regard to the uh, turning, uh, again, I think that's a traffic enforcement. We should write whatever we should on the notes, but we've had a lot of hearings on this case. And I think uh, I think it's time for us to to move on.
Right, right, okay, thank you. Um, yeah, Jella, Ms. Prangon.
Hi. Um, I received some information from a consultant during this discussion that perhaps there are certain cases when you can cross a double yellow. Um, I just forwarded you, um, haven't had a chance to really look.
We're not going to get into traffic rules. We've been led astray with other laws by this same team. So I'm just hoping when they make those turns uh, across the double yellow, they don't didn't get a ticket.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted you to be aware that um, I was contacting about that. Um, so are we?
Yeah, I saw equity environment, so you mean seven and.
Yeah, um, so are we going to cross that maneuverability page out?
You're going to take it out, just take it.
Take it out, Jella.
Just read it. Yeah, delete it from the set. And um, and uh, just uh, since they're listening, a warning to this consultant. Never state something about the law until you can show us a copy of the law that says you can. Because your goosey goosey feeling about whether it's allowed doesn't make me feel comfortable in light of some other feelings about whether something was allowed. Either it says it in the law and you give us a copy of it, or don't say it. Your fact witnesses, don't forget, all of you. So, okay. Great, so based on that, I would then like to make a motion to grant um, on the condition stated. Do I need, should I go through the conditions again, Chase or?
Please.
Okay, so the operational plan needs to be in the operational plan, which makes reference to dual order points and mobile order and pay. Um, and mobile app should be in the general text about our understanding. The um, a a sign that says turn off radio and respect neighbors should be added to the drive through itself. Uh, as you enter the drive through, you have to turn off your radio. Um, that uh, the menu board shall not be audible from residential property. Landscaping and fencing must be maintained in first class condition at all times. Trash must be stored only in fenced enclosed area. Signs indicating overflow parking at the rear shall be maintained. Um, drive, the drive through access shall remain within the C one dash two zoning district boundary lines as extended. By B S A calendar number two four five dash oh three B Z. And hours of operation are the same as previously approved, which were Sunday through Thursday from six AM to twelve AM. And Friday and Saturday from six AM to one AM. Got that one?
Got it.
Um, and I think, and so it's a five year term starting today. Hallelujah, thank you. Um, motion to grant on all of those conditions.
Chair Promata.
I.
Vice Chair Chanda.
Hi.
Commissioner Otley Brown.
I, having trouble today, sorry.
Commissioner Sheta.
I.
Commissioner Shabata.
Hi.
Thank you. Item number nine, twenty 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 four A thirty nine thirty five twenty seventh Street, Queens.
Just one second. Okay. All right. Okay, upon staff requests, um, following review of the initially submitted risk materials to respond to this last hearing. Um, a revised submission which establishes the expenditures was submitted along with an explanation about um, a sta- and a statement. Um, about serious loss, the the original submission submitted on time for this hearing was just a gigantic stack. Of receipts and checks and invoices and what are we supposed to do with this? So um, happily, the applicant provided a cover information so that we could understand what that pile of stuff is. We had asked, like, we had asked the last hearing that that's they support their statement of expenditures with backup. But we didn't mean for them to just throw the backup at us and then we're supposed to go through it and figure out what it means. Okay, uh, those are my comments, so um, Vice Chair Shonda.
I have no additional comments. I'm satisfied with the submission.
Okay. Uh, Commissioner Otley Brown.
I'm also satisfied with the can be uh, with the the serious loss statement and I'm fine with this case.
Okay, great. Uh, Commissioner Sheta.
I'm I'm satisfied with the with the condition with the with the submission and I'm 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 okay with the application. I'm ready to vote on it.
Okay, great. Um, Commissioner Shabata.
Nothing further from me, I'm prepared.
Okay. Right.
So the motion to grant, Chair Promata.
Yes, I.
Vice Chair Chanda.
I.
Commissioner Otley Brown.
I.
Commissioner Sheta.
I.
Commissioner Shabata.
All right.
You go. Item number ten, twenty nineteen two hundred B Z forty one dash nineteen Bell Boulevard, Queens.
Okay, I I want to extend my appreciation to the property owner for responding so thoroughly to our comments. Um, in physical reality, so as requested ADA access signs and a bell. Um, were provided um, at the front door of the P C E. And an area to be kept clear of parking in the alley um, that leads to the ADA access door was striped. It was very clearly striped, no parking. I think that was excellent, actually. Um, plans were plans were provided with acoustical details that show very minimal sound and vibration attenuation at the floors. With only approximately a quarter inch rubber flooring glued to the slab. And standard hung ceiling and partitions for this Orange Theory um, gym that has treadmills and cycles. Just below medical offices. So um, I just want to caution this applicant, property owner. Um, that this is very likely to present a problem for the other neighbors. Um, as we've seen in other Orange Theory gyms, they where all of the treadmills are used at the same time as part of their classes. So you get the vibration of ten people running on a treadmill at the same time. And ten people on the spin cycles all at the same pace and it creates significant vibration. So um, you know, don't be surprised if there are complaints from the medical office. Um, the plan was corrected to include all applicable zoning districts for the L shaped lot, which was a request of by council. Um, and I'd like to condition approval therefore because of the minimal amount of five uh, sound attenuation. But a condition approval on there being no noise or vibration that presents disturbances to neighbors. So then it puts it at the responsibility of the P C E to take care of that, okay? So uh, Vice Chair Shonda.
I agree with your recommendation.
Okay. Um, Commissioner Otley Brown.
I have no additional comments.
Commissioner Sheta.
Thank you, Chair. I I I agree that they responded thoroughly to um, to our uh, concerns and comments, especially the my my comments regarding the uh, stay cellar. Whether it's heated and and in reference to the um, like the footings being like the top of the footings being above above grade in the cellar. So they responded to that by saying that the cellar will be heated twenty four seven. I'm okay with that and I'm I'm satisfied with that. I want to thank them for that.
Yeah, they were very, you know, I have to tell you, I couldn't remember why they were telling us that the cellar was heated. Thank you for reminding me. Um, okay, and Commissioner Shabata.
I I think it was a an adequate submission and I have nothing further from me.
Okay, so then I would like to make a motion to grant on the only condition that uh, there be no noise or vibration that presents disturbance to neighbors.
Chair Promata.
I.
Vice Chair Chanda.
I.
Commissioner Otley Brown.
I.
Commissioner Sheta.
I.
Commissioner Shabata.
All right.
Item number eleven, twenty twenty dash eight B Z one seventy three East eighty third Street, Manhattan.
Okay, um, they provided us with interior photos and combined acoustical drawings um, in were were, sorry. The acoustical drawings were combined with the full plan set, which is what we asked them to do. A copy of the D O B reconsideration to not provide elevator access to the second floor was also provided. And the resolution relating to the other P C E that the um, sole cycle in the building was provided at the request of our council. Um, so other than that, I have nothing and I'd like to make a motion to grant and I don't see any conditions.
Chair Promata.
I.
Vice Chair Chanda.
I.
Commissioner Otley Brown.
I.
Commissioner Sheta.
I.
Commissioner Shabata.
Couldn't hear you. Can you say that again?
I.
I, okay.
Item number twelve, twenty twenty sixty two B Z ninety West two hundred and twenty fifth Street, Manhattan.
Okay, uh, drawings were revised to show acoustical treatments. Um, which again frankly isn't much in this two story commercial building. It's a nine millimeter, which is a little bit more than a quarter inch rubber flooring under treadmills that are located over another tenant. So I'd just like to say this is legalization, so that tenants either suffering or they're not suffering. But I'd like to um, recommend um, conditional approval that the um, that the noise and vibration not can created disturbance for neighbors. Motion to grant on that condition or if you don't agree with the condition, let me know.
Chair Promata.
I.
Vice Chair Chanda.
I.
Commissioner Otley Brown.
I.
Commissioner Sheta.
I.
Commissioner Shabata.
All right.
Okay, uh, withdrawals, item number thirteen, one ninety five oh two B C twenty seven ninety seven Linden Boulevard, Brooklyn.
Okay, just one second. Okay, I don't think we have any comments about that one. Oh, yeah, this one is there there as as described in the withdrawal letter. They're just going to continue with the term of approval for the drive in and they're not going to do anything. For the drive-in and they're not gonna do anything. Um, I'm sorry, of the, the eating and drinking, um, and the drive-through and they're not gonna make any additional changes. Um, so, uh, motion to withdraw.
Chair Promata?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Hartley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Nesheta?
I, I just wanna note that the, um, the date on the hearing in our calendar is six twenty-nine. Actually, this is incorrect. The correct, I believe, is six twenty and I vote aye.
Yeah, we corrected it on the, on the.
Six twenty, maybe you used a, an earlier one.
Maybe, yes.
I think it was five oh six twenty-nine, but yeah, okay.
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you, Commissioner Sheta. Commissioner Shabeta?
Aye.
Okay. S O C calendar, continued hearing items. Item number fourteen, one twenty-two ninety-five B C. One fifty-two sixty-five Rockaway Boulevard, Queens. Once again, this is a review session. No testimony.
Second scrolling. Lots of notes. There were, um, it may have been kind of confusing to read this. There were many submissions on this case with several repeated ones. Um, the dates of the submissions were March twenty-third and March twenty-fourth. Some, some were redundant and I have to say to project manager, you, you have to avoid the redundant submissions because. I read everything that's in the folders and then I read it and I say, didn't I read this already? And then I go back and I look at the other one and I'm like, is there a difference between this one and that one? And so it doubles or even triples the amount of review time and we don't learn anything new. So please void. Superseded documents that are submitted by the applicant, okay? Um, or that's not even superseded, duplicates. This one seemed to be, they're duplicates. Um, there was a letter submitted on March twenty-fourth. Um, and so I would like to recommend the, the author proofread the document before submitting. There were many. It's not that it was misspelled, it was the wrong word. So it sounds like spell check. Decided on the meaning of the text rather than the author. And so you're reading along and you're like, huh? And so it's a malaprop decided by either, um, Microsoft Word or Google or whoever it is that's helping you write your documents. Um, the letter requests that the term be lifted. But it doesn't include the reality that this is a request to operate the warehouse twenty-four seven. Which presents an entirely different set of issues and concerns relative to the adjacent residential users. I add that leases, to my knowledge, and I used to do a lot of work with leases, are rarely for twenty years. They are for three or five or seven years. On a good day, you'll get a ten-year lease. Um, so the rationale given for lifting the term is not logical that you can't. You, you can't rent if you don't have it to open, an open world of non-term restrictions. Um, the, the March twenty-fourth tech memo provides an operational plan. Um, which must be included in a restrictive declaration. So I, I would like to see a restrictive declaration drafted for this case. Um, and also in our resolution, it discusses. Many different things, but among them are like how many trucks pull in at a time, what the maneuverability is. It, it, it claims that there's only one truck at a time that's actually moving around. Um, it claims there, it says there will be flag. Flag people that will be directing the trucks. It goes on through a lot of different, it says that for instance, there's no. Horn blowing, no backup signals, all of those things which are really impossible for us to regulate. But it's making a representation that that's how the work is being handled, right? Um, and so it also, the tech memo also describes the vehicle frequency at the site. But it, but, and this is a little bit me needing some help reviewing this part of the tech memo with the consultant. Um, it describes the vehicle frequency in terms of what's known as passenger car equivalents. That are a factor of two point five for a four axle truck. Um, I'd like the consultant to translate that into how many truck trips per day and at peak hours. Um, and also at night, um, there's, and, and I know that there's a narrative about this, but the table one trip generation. Um, is in percentage of total vehicular tip trips as opposed to the actual number of trucks. That's the way I'm reading it. It may be the actual number of trucks, but the title says percentage of vehicle trips. And then it'll say one point four or something like that, which isn't, what is that? It's like a truck and a quarter. So it doesn't really tell me how many. Trucks, right? Um, and I don't see which of the analyses. Um, the tables or other analyses result then in the seven truck trip total that's described in the narrative at page four. Um, and again, I, it just may be that I'm not understanding how to read the data. Um, so I wanna see where does the data help you conclude there's seven truck trips? Um, in a, in total and during the nighttime period. Then the tech memo also states that there would be very limited truck traffic from nine PM to seven AM. With the majority of the trips occurring between six AM and seven AM. Um, with a total of four trips in that hour and one to two trips per hour at other times of the night. So. Um, this is the trips that would be in that open parking area. Then, then on top, then the other part of the tech memo includes a shadow study, which we requested. The shadow study shows significant incremental shadows caused by the twelve-foot. Uh, sorry, the twenty-foot high acoustical barrier on the three adjacent properties to the north. Of between six and twelve hours every day all year long. And although there may be a tree or other vegetated canopy over some of those properties today. We've learned from Parks Department responses and E A Ss that such shadows can actually kill the vegetation. Um, that must have at least a few hours of daily direct sun in order to survive. So, um. I, but I do have to say that I'm accustomed to looking at shadow studies where they plug in. They first do the analysis of the shadow being cast. This, that's the raw shadow being cast by the structure. Then they insert into that the, um, the buildings and other obstructions that cast their own shadows. And they run that raw analysis over those buildings. And the increment is actually the difference between those buildings and the new shadow. And that's the increment. But we didn't actually get that. We did get a modeling of the buildings. But they never included a modeling of the shadows cast after the buildings cast a shadow. So you really can't tell what the incremental shadow is. The, the chart that they gave us said that the incremental shadows, which are. Al- almost complete across some of the properties, um, last for between six and twelve hours, which is rather. Astonishing, right? So, um, I don't think that the models are complete and I think they're misleading. And therefore not giving us the information that we need. Um. And as is pointed out in, I think it's a cover letter. The existing building is, is twenty-three feet high or something like that. And. The, the satellite imagery that I have access to and I need to get access to on the Explorer that I haven't been able to use. I don't know whether that imagery might be taken at different times of the day. But that one gives you a sense of how that, that building casts a shadow over the backyards. So you can see that at a certain point during the day, it casts a significant shadow. But, but that building with respect to those yards is to the. Um, now I can't remember if it's to the south of those buildings or to the west of those properties. I, I think it's to the south of the properties. This wall is both to the south and to the, um, west. So the result of it is that, um, it's casting shadows. All day long, all the time, because you've got the two directions of sunlight covered. So two main directions of sunlight covered. So, um, so that's the first. And so I have to say that for me. It, this makes it a very tricky application. Um. The, the pull between what I recognize is the real need for twenty-four-hour operations in order to compete with the airport system. Um, and, um, and then the concern for the impact. Um, for the impact of that function and our own efforts to minimize that impact. Um, on, on the neighbors, our own impact caused by our minimization impact, uh, efforts, right? So I wanna say that, um. I very much appreciate the owner's willingness to work with the B S A to come to the best solution possible. With the help of what I consider to be very able and professional consultants. Um, and obvious, and the obviously significant cost of these studies and the proposed mitigation measures entail. I mean, building this wall and that green fence and all of that will not be a small cost. It's a significant cost. So in order to kind of put myself to try to understand this application better, because we've been at this a long time. And sometimes you forget what your notes said way at the top. Um, or the significance of those notes. I actually went back and looked through the application materials to understand. Um, what we're actually dealing with on this site. First, I wanna note a letter of objection that was dated July twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty from a neighbor to the immediate rear. Whose property is located mostly behind the approximately twenty-foot-high loading dock extension. You know, there's that little extension that pokes out into the parking area. Um, she describes what it was like to live adjacent to twenty-four operations at the site. So apparently. The site did operate, as she said, I'm gonna read what she wrote. The above location operated twenty-four seven for years. The noise was horrific, blowing horns when arriving with deliveries, slamming things on the loading area. Loud music, working on trucks. I woke up at five thirty AM, got ready for work, leery-eyed from lack of sleep. With the help of city council member, Thomas White, we were able to eliminate the night shift. So we actually have the experience of a neighbor who had to live with that with a twenty-foot-high wall. More or less blocking off the rear of her property. It doesn't block it off completely. So there's like line of sight on an angle. Um, and, and importantly, that extension is the loading dock. So they, the cars would drive along her property line, the trucks, drive along her property lines, enter into that loading dock. Um. So, so I, I, I read that. And then, um, one of the letters from the environmental consultant. States that the Acoustical Modeling Program Sound Plan, um. Determine that the twenty-five-foot-high wall would do the job. But I didn't understand from this submission whether that included attenuation to the second floors where the bedrooms are. So this woman who wrote this was talking about being woken up. Asleep, so I assume the bedrooms are on the second floor and I didn't understand whether that twenty-foot wall is sufficient to attenuate that. So that was the first thing. And then I, then I, after reading that complaint, then I returned to the original grant. Which reveals that this use was established prior to nineteen sixty-one. Hence was illegal, non-conforming use. And so it was established not through the B S A, but as of right, prior to nineteen sixty-one. And the nineteen ninety-five variance application that was submitted. The purpose of that was actually to allow the southerly enlargement of the existing building, so away from the parking lot. In, in the other direction is to the south. Um, so the southerly enlargement of the existing building that's located, the existing building is located on the northern half of the lot. Adjacent to the open parking area now in discussion. So the, the building that we're, the portion of the building that we're talking about. Has been there since prior to nineteen sixty-one and so has that parking area. And the area that was expanded to the south was also a parking area. And it was used for the same purpose as basically airport truck warehousing. Um, so this use adjacent to these neighbors has been in existence since before sixty-one. And had the building not been enlarged to the south, uh, making it subject to B S A scrutiny and term limits. It could have operated twenty-four seven with any use group seventeen or a lesser commercial use group as of right. The site is also in a C two-two, so as of right, a twenty-three-foot-high building could be built full to the lot lines. And I actually was looking to see if the adjacency to a residential district would prevent that. Um, being built full to the lot lines on the side lot line, but I couldn't find anything. So if anything, it might have been restricted eight foot back from the slot line, but I didn't find the regulation that. Um, actually would prevent it from being twenty-three feet to the law lines. So here, here's being torn back and forth. The nineteen ninety-five environmental analysis. Which was attached to the tech memo that we just received and also submitted with the initial application. When we first started this review, describes the as-of-right uses and also notes. There is parking provided on the residential side of, it is common in this area. For the rear yards of residences to back onto the rear yards of freight forwarding operations. So there's a lot of these operations in this area, which as a rule have blank walls. For some of the larger operations along Rockaway Boulevard. It was observed that the rear walls of the commercial operations have been allowed to be covered with ivy. A plant material which is green year-round, which is what's being proposed here, English ivy on that crawling, uh, trellis. Um, this provides for a more attractive transition between the commercial and residential uses. And is a treatment which could be incorporated into the proposed project. So that was what was in the nineteen ninety-five environmental analysis. So I, I don't actually know whatever happened to the ivy on the back of the building, but the, but the commissioners were obviously concerned about. The impact of the back of this building, the new building, on, on the neighbors to the rear. Um, so, let me see. Um, so. So I'm given, I'm, I, I, I'm going back and forth with this one. There's an operational plan provided. Um, I wanna say that should be included into the restrictive declaration and our resolution. I may have mentioned that before. But given the tech memo's conclusion, so, and then I'm going to another question for the consultant. Given the tech memo's conclusion that only one to two truck trips would occur at night. I'd like to know why, and maybe we asked this question before, but I'd like to know why we couldn't just limit. The seven PM to seven AM or some version of that. Um, those deliveries to the interior docks on Rockaway Boulevard. Which then might obviate the need for the twenty-foot acoustical wall. So it's, this is me going back and forth arguing with myself. On the other hand, erection of the wall, even if only for daytime use, could improve the quality of life for the neighbors. Assuming incremental shadows are actually overcome by existing structures on these lots. So, um. So one of the things I'd like the consultant to do. Is do a, a more complete incremental shadow study so we can really understand whether most. Most of the vegetation is already in shadow as they sort of claim. Um, and, uh, and so, you know, it's not that I've come to a conclusion. Um, but these are the issues that I'm raising and I'd like the consultant to respond to. Sorry for this long, um, comments, Vice Chair Shonda.
Um, from my notes and from my recollection, I remember very early on, uh, when the talk of the twenty-foot-high tower, uh, tall. Wall was mentioned, I had referred to the thing that let this not be an issue of shadow and other issues. And we seemed to have at that time not considered that to be an issue. And when I look at the map. And the orientation of the way the sun would rise, um. All the lots along one fifty-fourth street are on the east side. Um, so, uh, it's really the western sun. Uh, that is setting, that is causing, uh, that would cast the shadow, uh, on this. And, uh, Lot One, which is, um, uh, the one that has both the side and the rear. Uh, butting this lot, uh, gets the western, uh, sun and, uh, and also the. Will have the western sun and also the southern sun blocked by it. So that is the only one that is going to be, uh, more affected by this. So that is the only one that is going to be, uh, more affected by this wall. Because the building on Lot Thirteen has a, has a one-story building in the back. It's a pretty solid one-story building. It's not a garage. So I think it's a, um, so that already has its own shadow that is being casted in, i- in addition to the incremental, uh, that would be there. Um, I, uh, and you know, we, I remember clearly also saying, you know, the, when we were questioning whether the height of the wall should be twenty, eighteen, whatever it was, I had brought it to the attention that as of right, uh, a full lot line building could be built up to the height of twenty-three feet. And, uh, the shadow that would be cast from that would not raise any issues. So, um, you know, I'm weighing it based on what zoning would allow as of right uh, this location and what is being proposed and what is the best balance of the two. Uh, and how we can reduce the degree of discomfort to the neighbor. Uh, and noise has all along been the primary concern on this site. And the resolution that the board has, uh, or the recommendation that the board has made with the wall, uh, with a lot of, uh, uh, greening along it that would survive, uh, even in, uh, uh, within not adequate sunlight, uh, was the way we had directed the applicant to go. So with that all said, um, I am, you know, I would be okay with this wall with the greening, uh, especially for Lot One. I'm less concerned about the lots four and thirteen, um, because they, uh, are, um, Lot Thirteen, as I mentioned, already has a, a house sitting in the back. Um, my question was with regards to the operational plan, and I agree that all of the elements of the operational plan should be recorded into the restrictive deck. And the enforcement of it, uh, in terms of signage, additional signage should be there, uh, along the bays, asking, um, the trucker, uh, to stop, uh, to stop the engine, no idling. Um, the, and my question is, how would the flagger be notified? Uh, and, uh, what are the shifts of the flaggers? Uh, and, uh, you know, it's really more in terms of the operationally that we can make it much more streamlined and, uh, and less of a burden to, uh, the street grid and to the residential network here.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Um, Commissioner Ali Brown?
I'm actually fine with the twenty-foot acoustical wall with the, uh, ivy along the outer side of it. I think that the most important thing here is to actually protect the homes from the noise and the lighting that goes along with the twenty-four-hour operation. And so I think that that's a suitable solution. I'm not as concerned about the shadows, because if as of right, you're allowed to build to the lot line, then they would have that shadow issue anyway. So I'm not really concerned about that. I'm happy that they put the lights in the wall two feet from the top to reduce any light spill to zero. That's fine. And being that they want both to go to a twenty-four-hour operation as well as eliminate the term, I think they need to give a little with the board. And if we were to grant twenty-four hours, then we should certainly keep the term in place so that we can monitor the operation and ensure that it doesn't, um, provide any other unnecessary negatives for the neighborhood in which it's located.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Commissioner Sheta?
Thank you, Chair. Uh, regarding the shadow, um, I'm not an architect and, um, I, I don't have like much experience with the shadow studies. But I believe looking at the Google Maps, uh, I, 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 I believe the, um, I, I just want to share the Google Maps on the screen here. If, if you look, the north is that way, and I believe.
No, 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 no. North is to the left. North is towards, uh, one hundred thirty-second Avenue. It's oriented different.
Yeah, this is the north, right, right here. Yeah, it's that way. Yeah, it's pointing, pointing like to that corner, from that corner to that corner. So if, if you look at the sun in the morning, that it's coming from the east, it's kind of low. It's, it's going to be covering all this and probably all that. So in the morning, I have no issue. And like during the, approaching the afternoon, I would say from, from probably ten to three or four, it's, sun is going to be rotating that way, but it's going to be high. So I don't think that fence here will have too much effect on, in like, uh, like bearing the sun from, from covering the, the neighbors. What concerns me actually is, and, and that's why I'm, I'm okay, I'm not just okay with that, with that fence at twenty feet. I actually during the past hearing or two, I expressed concerns that twenty feet may not be enough to make sure that the second floor is not impacted with the noise. Because what we've seen before is monitoring and, and studying noise propagation based on twenty-foot wall. Beyond that, nothing. And they did a monitor at the adjacent property. They, they did the monitoring inside, uh, their, their site, I believe. So I'm not sure if twenty-foot wall would be enough to make sure that the second floor of the adjacent proper, property will not be impacted with, with the kind of like, I'm sure significant noise from the truck operation on site. I, I have two main concerns, uh, associated with noise. One is regarding to the twenty-four-seven operation. I, I, every time I think of this, I'm, I'm, I can't believe that a twenty-four-seven operation would be like peaceful for the neighbors. This is number one. Number two, the term, I, I do not understand the insistence of the applicant uh, on, on eliminating the term. Uh, I, I don't think we, we, I'm not prepared to allow something like that. And on the noise side, I would like them to like do more to convince us that the, uh, twenty-four-seven operation is, is not going to have significant impact on the neighbors, especially on the second floor. So I'm, I'm waiting for their feedback on that.
Okay, so I, I would like to, um, I know that maybe you don't have experience reviewing shadow studies, but they're pretty simply done. Um, page a hundred, it starts a hundred twenty-two in the tech memo. Um, it's not the numbered pages, it's the PDF page number one twenty-two. That starts your, I believe, starts the shadow study. Um, yeah. Uh, and so you'll, you can see as they, the way shadow studies work is they pick certain days of the year, all the seasons of the year, like there are certain prime days where they'll do a study of what happens as the sun moves across the site, right? And so you'll see as it moves across the site at how far it casts. Well, it's only a twenty-foot-high wall. Um, so, um, it's true that in the, in the first thing in the morning, it's not in a position to cast a shadow, but as it moves across towards the afternoon, um, it, it casts shadows. And there's a summary of the shadow study on a chart on, I just want you to have all the information, a chart on page one thirty-two of the tech memo that talks about the analysis day and time. So it's December twenty-one, March and September, May and August and June. Those are the times when they check. And there are three lots, really four lots that are affected by the shadows. Um, and so it'll tell you, it says how long the shadow duration is on each one. So, um, for all of Lot One, which is the lot that's surrounded by this use, right? The duration of shadows is between six hours and twelve hours. That's very significant. And to get an image of what that is, you have to look at those diagrams that show the casting for each of those days, so you get to see how long the shadow is at each time of day, right? At, and each, um, uh, time of year. Because obviously the shadows are longer when the sun is lower, right? So the, so, um, and then Lot Six also, which is the lot adjacent, also is cast in shadow for about six hours a day all year long. And Lot Thirteen, um, three to six hours a day all year long. Um, so, and, and Lot Fifteen, which I believe is the one beyond, is, uh, two to four hours. So what we learned from the Parks Department, it's just more or less, I just want you to have this information, not necessarily that I'm trying to convince you one way or the other. Um, what we learned from the Parks Department is that trees, or say vegetation, needs like a minimum of four hours of sunlight a day or it doesn't survive. But the, the problem that I was talking about is this subject called incremental shadows. They never place in to their shadow study the buildings. And we might find that indeed the buildings, which are in the same position to the sun as this wall, are casting as much shadow on the site um, as the wall or nearly as much. Like there might be like a little corner that's always in sunlight, but the rest of the site is completely in shadow for exactly the same hours. And so this is an incremental shadow study that isn't incremental. Um, and so it's, it's misleading. And I've often, I've worked with consultants who, um, don't see that we're not able to, from these diagrams, um, tell, is it bad? Instead, they just say not to worry. So you can't say not to worry. You have to show us in the diagram. And to use a tree canopy, I'm not sure if that's fair, because uh, the tree canopy in December on a sunny day, you want to go outside and take advantage of the sun if there's sun, right? So, um, so, and starting in, say, November, you stop having the tree canopy. Right? So, and it goes all the way until now, right? We don't have leaves on trees till now. So it's a, it's a long time period where you wouldn't get sun, um, if this wall is the only thing that would block it. And, and it's not intended to convince you, because I also think that if, you know, this is a common phenomenon in this area, um, and, uh, I, but I wish there was a better solution. And that's why I, um, that's why I'm asking, because it doesn't seem to be a lot of frequency of trucks. Um, maybe there's a way to keep it all inside the building during those noisy hours. I don't know. Um, and I think I didn't ask Commissioner Sheta.
Uh, thank you, Chair. Um, so I, uh, I heard your comments and I do think that, uh, and I, 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 I think that I would like to hear the response from the consultants as well. Um, I, I, I think, I think we all, uh, are trying to find the best way to insulate these, these neighbors. Um, I, I, I do, I'm kind of torn on it. I don't know what the best way is at this point. Um, uh, it seems like that wall could very well be the solution, uh, and, but the, we should know what kind of impact that wall is having. Uh, similar to like a lighting study, you know, we, we want to know what we're actually, how much shadow we're actually putting off and how much is being put off by other, um, by the other structures. Uh, the one thing I am certain of is that I am opposed to, uh, not, uh, to, to relieve in the term limits. Um, they, I, I imply, I, I have in my career seen twenty-year leases, um, and they're great. Uh, but just because, uh, they exist doesn't mean that, uh, everyone should have one. Um, and with the, the, some of the complaints of these, of these neighbors, I think it's something that we need to keep an eye on. This is a very, uh, this is an intense use, um, and it's backing on residential. So I think that we, we should, uh, a twenty-year term limit is not exactly something I'm interested in.
Well, they're asking for a twenty-year. They're not asking for, they're asking for, there, there's already a twenty-year term limit. So that's the standard. They're asking to lift the twenty-year term.
That's right. I, I don't, I, again, I don't see that as a.
No.
I was actually thinking of a shorter term limit, but in any event.
Yeah, me too. Well, I was thinking perhaps we, we put this on a shorter leash because we're checking on, on whether this wall is even going to work. And, you know, I'm taking wild guesses at the cost of this wall in my head, not knowing. Um, it's going to cost a lot of money to do this. The wall is heavy to build, right? Because it's this, the kind of material they use on highways. So it, it's, it's going to be a very expensive solution. It, it really better work. Um, not to mention the, the vegetation system, which is also an expensive solution. So, okay, thank you, everyone. Oh, Tracy, go ahead.
I just wanted to note for the record that we did send the, the revised tech memo and responses to DEP for noise and, um, DOT as well.
Great. Thank you. Okay.
Item number fifteen fifty-five forty-five B C sixty-three Kingsland Avenue, Brooklyn.
Okay, uh, although the applicant states that an application for an alteration type one of CO change has been filed, I see no sign of it on Biz or DOB Now. Um, so they need to provide a copy of the PW one application and show that it was filed. Um, we have a note from DEC indicating that the groundwater monitoring should continue, but can be reduced to annual. We had asked about the monitoring. Um, uh, drawings show intended striping of the two parking spots. Um, so they're adding these two parking spots, but I actually don't understand those parking spots, because, um, I, there's no indication that the pump island that needs to access there is being closed. That was a statement made the last year and by the applicant's representative that they would close the pump island or that dispenser to allow for parking there. But for one, I'm not sure why you would want to do that. And for two, um, I didn't see any indication that it's closed. Um, and also, uh, as requested, they indicated that there are existing floor drains inside the building, because they do car washing inside the building. Um, the drawing also shows the location of no parking on sidewalk signs, which is good. And, um, I was actually hoping to see that work done before we vote, so, which can be done before we vote. So, and then we'd get photographs of it. Um, so, and, yeah, so let's hear from commissioners. Um, Vice Trishani?
Yeah, um, so here are my questions. Um, so based on my, uh, last site visit, I noticed there was a banner on the building along the Woodpoint Avenue. Oh, oh, sorry, Woodpoint Road. Um, and, uh, that should be included in the signage analysis and, and make sure that, uh, it meets the zoning requirement signage, um, calculation. Um, the other thing was that it seems like all three bays are equipped for car washing. I just wanted the applicant to confirm that. Uh, and if they are, uh, I know they're showing the drainage, but I just want to make sure if, if the car washing is going to happen in all three bays. Um, and the two parking spaces that have been shown, uh, this is a question. Do one of them need to be handicap parking? Uh, is any regulatory, if so, excuse me. If so, then access from one, the handicap parking space, um, to the car, uh, the, this car awaiting service area, uh, for customers should be indicated. And how that would be indicated, I would be interested in seeing that.
So, sorry, do you mean it needs to be marked as an ADA space?
Uh, I, my, my first question is, does it need to have at least one ADA parking space? If it does, then is there a clear, safe pedestrian, uh, ADA access route from there to the building?
Mm-hmm.
Or if there's an alternative?
Okay. Okay, thank you. Uh, Commissioner Ali Brown?
I have no questions.
Okay. Uh, Commissioner Sheta?
Thank you, Chair. Nothing further from me.
Commissioner Sheta?
Nothing further from me, Chair.
Okay. All right.
Item number sixteen, six forty-eight eighty-eight B C, twenty-one oh-seven Richmond Road, Staten Island.
Okay, um, the submission appears to have responded to all of our issues and removed the request for the enlargement of the building with that refrigerated enclosure um, by placing the walk-in refrigerator on the inside of the building. Um, the trash enclosure was also moved closer to the building with the doors facing inward instead of to the street. Um, there's also refrigerated trash storage on the building interior that's indicated. We received copies of the. We received copies of the restrictive declarations that are recorded against the property, as no site work is being proposed that would disturb, um, city planning approvals. I don't think we need anything further on that. You know, if there had been site work, um, maybe CPC would have had to sign off on it. Um, I think then we're only waiting for DOT's response to the tech memo that was submitted on March eighth. Did we receive something recently on this?
Yes, um, oh, did you wanna?
Yeah, go ahead.
You can say.
Go ahead, Tracy.
Okay, yeah, we, we actually had a call with DOT about the last response last week, and we got, we got closer, and the consultant modified the tech memo over the weekend to address DOT's concerns. So I believe that, um, pending final sign off, which I, I believe everything has addressed, and now the tech memo says the demand is going to be twenty-nine spaces, which is a little higher than the last submission.
What changed that change of demand? I'm just curious.
Uh, well, actually, DOT had given the original data, and they decided they didn't, um, it wasn't working out the way they had, um, anticipated. So they, they asked, uh, for a more conservative use of the data. Um, and that's what, what is given in the latest.
Interesting. Okay. How data is used. Inter- interesting. Okay. Thank you. Okay, but just to clarify, this is a non-seeker techno, right?
Right.
Yeah, that, that affects whether we can close that.
Yeah, I'm okay. I believe it's gonna be a sign off, if not today, very soon. Um.
All right. Um, all right, and then, uh, sorry. All right, and then the other, uh, my other comment was the questions of compat- compatibility of this use in the neighborhood was addressed, as requested, as well as the delta between the parking demand for the previously approved use and the proposed, even though the delta is a different number now, but it's still, the proposed had a much greater, I mean, the original had a much greater parking demand. So, um, so I'm okay with this. So, uh, Vice Chair Shonda.
Yes, uh, I'm satisfied with the response, uh, the applicant has provided in such a quick, uh, manner. And I also found the DOT analysis quite interesting. I was following the chain of review and the last submission that was made on, uh, um, uh, April eighth, um, and how DOT asked for a different methodology of, uh, assessment, and which was more conservative than even the three other conservative analysis that was done, uh, in the March one. And even then, um, there is adequate parking space, uh, using the conservatives, so. Uh, and, and from, based on what Ms. Benke has stated, if, um, DOT is satisfied with it, I really have no additional comments. I'm totally satisfied with this application.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Ali Brown?
Um, now that the refrigerator room is inside the building, I'm satisfied with the project.
That's how you, and, and you know, lesson to others, that's how you get a project through. When the commissioners say do it, and you do it, then you're done. Yay. Thank you. Um, okay, Commissioner Sheta?
Thank you, Chair, and I, I, I believe, I believe they are almost there, uh, they are done. I wanna thank them for being open to, uh, listen to us and, and like follow our, our instructions on this. Um, I see, I saw that they submitted dry well drawings as well, showing the zipper drain. And, uh, I'm, I'm just waiting for a confirmation from them that the as-built grade or the built grades are, are identical to, uh, more or less typically identical, I would say, to what is shown on the dry well drones. Other than that, like I said, I just wanna thank them, and, and good luck.
So, okay, so you want them to clarify that, that, that as.
Just confirm me, just a confirmation, a confirmation that the grades, uh, that were built are typically, uh, identical to what is shown on the dry well, uh, drones. Because the dry well drones actually are kind of like an older date from the plant submitted to us.
Yes.
So just wanna make sure that it, we're, we're looking at apple and apple, not apple and orange.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Sheta?
I'm satisfied with this application, um, and I, uh, look forward to this commencing.
Okay, thank you. All right.
Item number seventeen twenty-one ninety-one B C, twenty-four oh seven twenty-four seventeen Lyndon Boulevard, Brooklyn.
Okay. We're still in review session.
Yes, sorry.
Um, at staff request, the applicant made a late submission on April first, um, because the materials submitted by the submit date were incomplete. At five P M on this past Friday, a Lumen spread diagram was provided, which is about three weeks late. Um, using a lights-on, lights-off approach, as directed in our ad- admin notice, that appears to indicate that the lighting levels at the residential property line come from off-site. Um, cause with lights off, you still have lights, you still have lumens on the residential property. We have the issue of abandonment of use, um, which is not answered, except by an affidavit from the owner. Um, this is insufficient, and abandonment of any use whatsoever on the site is evident from the aerial. When I say any use whatsoever, it means really abandonment, like shut the door and walked away kind of abandonment. Um, that's evident from, um, aerial imagery that we have from twenty nineteen and twenty eighteen. So an affidavit from an owner trying to refute, um, hard evidence, photographic evidence, is certainly not sufficient. We need to know that it wasn't abandoned for more than two years. Um, so the cover letter provided by the applicant implies that the, or applicant's counsel implies that the board was aware, and this is about the adjacent site, implies that the board was aware that the subject's site was held in common with the adjoining lots forty-two to forty-seven um, since the initial grant. I'd like to know where such a statement comes from. The nineteen ninety-five resolution that legalized, legalized this use after a lapse of the nineteen seventy-two renewal makes no mention of ownership of the adjacent site. And in fact, which is why I'm so astonished by such a statement in counsel's letter. And in fact, at the time of application in nineteen ninety-one, and throughout most of the extending hearing calendar, um, for that application, it was laid over for three years. The lots were not held in common with the, the owner of the subject lot. As the acquisition by the current owner didn't occur until January of nineteen ninety-five. So I have to say again, um, testimony by counsel functions as fact witnesses. How could they make such a statement when the statement was untrue? Um, and then if I continue, by two thousand and seven, when the applicant came for renewal, the site was out of compliance with board conditions, and neighbors and community board opposed. The complaints were the poor maintenance, this is in two thousand and seven, poor maintenance of the site, presence of a trailer which is not permitted for the VSA-approved plans, excess signage, insufficient street trees and landscape buffering, the presence of barbed wire fencing, non-opaque chain link fencing adjacent to the residential use, and the negative impact on the adjacent property. Um, and then, then it says in the resolution, whereas in response to the noted concerns, the applicant proceeded to bring the site into compliance and provided photographs into the record reflecting, one, the site and the adjacent site have been cleaned up. Two, the trailer has been removed from the site. Three, the excess signage has been removed. Four, the barbed wire has been removed. And so those read the same as our observations today. The resolution imposed conditions, but it did not mention awareness of the common ownership of the adjacent lots. And the conditions were, um, the site shall be maintained free of debris and graffiti. Opague fencing and landscape buffer shall be provided along the northwest property line. Site conditions shall conform to the BSA-approved plans. Number of cars for sale at the site shall be limited to thirteen. Signage shall comply with C one regulations, hours of operation, uh, and all of this listed on the certificate of occupancy. At the two thousand and nine renewal, the community board again recommended denial, and neighbors observed that the conditions were not complied with. The complaints were similar to what we see today, and indicated the use was not active. So, and the two thousand and nine resolution, the complaints were the existence of a trailer not reflected on the approved plans, the requirement for a shed at the rear of the building, the compliance with the approved out, hours of operation, um, the, or non-compliance, the absence of required landscaping and fencing, sign compliance, including sign brackets on the sidewalk, inconsistency in the curb cut widths per approved plans, and parking that is not in compliance with the approved site plan. And then the board says in, in making its resolution, whereas in response, the applicant stated the trailer has been removed, that the shed is required for storage of automotive blasts, that the hours of operation are eight A M to five P M and so on, that the fencing and landscaping would be as reflected on the approved plans. Um, they provided a sign analysis reflecting the signage complies with the red zoning regulations and the C one. They submitted plans which reflect the curb cut sizes, and they submitted photographs which reflect that the trailer and the sign brackets along the fence have been removed, and the parking layout onsite is consistent with the layout on the site plan. So, again, the board in, in two thousand and nine imposed conditions, but did not discuss in the resolution any awareness that the adjacent lots were held in common with the subject lot. So again, I don't know how the applicant's counsel can make such a statement that the board knew that the lot were held in common with the neighboring lots. And I have to say, had that information been provided in nineteen ninety-one, or in nineteen ninety-five, when it became the case, right before the board voted on the case, it, the lot, at the outcome would likely have been different, because now the site was not burdened in the same way as was claimed in the original application. And I believe counsel for the applicant knows very well that it is immaterial whether the tax lots were declared a single zoning lot, if they were held in common and could have been used to militate against the need for a variance. Worse still, in this case, the lots seem to have been used for similar purposes, both this site and the adjacent site, for the storage of cars, whether for sale or rental or otherwise. Today, aerial imagery shows construction of a building, um, on the adjacent lot, um, lots that appears to be attached to, but certainly is of the same dimensions of, and immediately adjoining the subject building. So the argument that the lots are unrelated is not credible. Um, the Department of Buildings, uh, biz site shows many violations issued against the adjoining sites for illegal use going back to at least nineteen ninety-nine, hence evidence of continuing illegal behavior by the subject property owner who took possession in nineteen ninety-five. Um, and unaffected, that, that property owner unaffected by violations and city efforts to curtail the improprieties, just completely ignoring them. Aerial imagery shows these lots parked with dozens and dozens of cars, and one image of semi-trailers, like thirty of them on the site. The applicant provided us with tax photos of the adjacent lots, but I'm not sure what they are intended to prove, other than that the houses on lots forty-two to forty-seven were demolished in the late sixties, early seventies, and that the site has been disrespectfully and illegally used, at least since the nineteen eighties, as it is today. As far as I can tell, the use of those lots for storage of vehicles for whatever commercial use was not permitted at any time, so is not vested as legal non-conforming. The applicant states that there is no evidence of zoning lot merger or DOB filings to that effect. Of course not. The site is illegal. The use on the site is illegal. What permit would you have applied for to use the illegal site as an illegal site? Please give me a permit. Photos are provided of the site today in an attempt to demonstrate to the board that it has been cleaned up and improved as the board directed it to. Of course, the site hasn't actually been cleaned up, as is evident from the provided photos. It is only that a couple of items the board complained about were likely removed from the photo, at the very least. So like moved over there, took the photo, moved it back. Um, this board has seen this behavior before. In fact, at every hearing since nineteen ninety-one, the applicant is asked to address the problems of non-compliance. And at every hearing, the applicant provides photos of a cleaned-up site and drawings to show its intentions and its promise to be good. But the record shows that the applicant has never been true to its word. And this has become its routine. Go through the motions of compliance, take the trailer off the site, move the cars around, amend the drawings, get the renewal, and go back to its old ways in a month or two without having made any of the promised changes. I don't agree to allow this anymore. The owner has complete disdain for the law, and this board should not facilitate this behavior. The site is enormous in an R-five zoning district that allows as much as thirty-two thousand square feet of residential floor area on the combined twenty-four thousand square foot lot. There is a great need for housing in this area. The owner should build housing or sell the site to someone who will. If they wanna continue commercial use here, they should take it up with city planning. But from my part, it should no longer be, be, uh, of the problem of the board's standards and appeals, and we should no longer warrant this use. That's my opinion. So I go to Vice Chair Shonda.
Um, I have to say, this has been one of the, it's as, as a simple project as it sounded, it's been one of the most frustrating projects I, I've had to work with ever in, uh, in my career. Um, and, and the reason I say that, it's because of, as you mentioned, the disdain the ownership has shown towards any of the regulations uh, that, uh, we have asked the applicant to abide by um, since nineteen ninety-five, and not just for this site, but the abating lots also. And disrespect towards this neighborhood by keeping such, uh, a poor-conditioned neighborhood. Um, and I have to say, I mean, I agree with you, the affidavit is definitely not adequate. There are other ways of proving ownership, uh, or anything. If this is a car dealership, you must be getting cars. I mean, uh, show the trucks that are coming and that delivered, or the companies that came and delivered these cars. Show those receipts. You know, there's so many ways to prove it. So it may not be operating in the most, uh, correct way, um, accounting way, and therefore the documents are inadequate to provide anything, and that's why it, it, it has been dormant. And I think what was also very frustrating is when I looked through the site photos, um, that it was trying to show how, um, the site has been cleaned out, and how the site would, uh, maintain the fifteen parking spaces. When you look through the photos, even though it's dated the same day, you notice the parking layout has changed from the time the first photo was taken to the fir- the second photo was taken. So if you look at, uh, one angle, the photo shows that, that the fenced area has lot more parking spaces than what the plan had approved. And then the second photo, which is targeting specifically that fenced area, the, the cars have been realigned and relayed out exactly where the plan is, and the photograph has been taken. And it is so frustrating to provide those kind of documentation and expect us to go through that narrative and ex- accept it, and therefore approve it. Um, I think we have reached the limit, and I agree with you. It is, uh, I am not at all convinced to proceed with this application, unless the applicant can show continuacies, which for over two years, applicant has not been able to provide it. And if applicant does want to go through with it, it has to do all the improvements. It has to do all the improvements well before we can approve it. This is one place where I'm really going to take an exception, whereas everything has to be put in place before we can move ahead with it. I'm not gonna take a word for granted. But we are not there. The continuous use is still outstanding there.
Mm-hmm. Okay, thank you. Um, Commissioner Ali Brown?
I agree with you. There's still a, a large gap in the, uh,
I agree with you, there's still a large gap in the proof of continuous use and the gap spans from somewheres around October 2017 through December 2018. And the only thing that shows usage within that time period is a water bill from September 2018 to December 2018 that shows minimal usage, that they would have to provide a lot of backup information to show why a usage that amounts to less than an apartment, one two-bedroom apartment's usage in a month for three months is acceptable as showing that there was actually ongoing active business use here. And an affidavit from the owner that was clear to say that there was no discontinuance of two years or more, as if that were the standard that we were applying here. And I believe we apply the standard of every year showing usage for a variance and not two years because we had this discussion a couple of years ago about using the DOB standard from a different part of the zoning resolution to justify continued use here. And we agreed that continued use should be shown annually. And so, given that you still have that gap of close to two years or a little bit more than two years with nothing but an owner affidavit that doesn't even attest to active use yearly or annually. So, I don't know where we go from there. That's a threshold issue to me. And whereas even if the property owner committed to the various intensive upgrades to their site in order to make their effect on the community minimal, you still can't get past that threshold issue. And so, that would lead me to think that they can't continue their usage.
Thank you for clarifying the discontinuous continuance rule at the BSA. It's true, I get confused about between our standard versus the zoning resolution for an as-of-right use. And that's a note to our counsel. I'd like us to have a little administrative notice issued to clarify that point because if we're jumping back and forth in the hearings, that's confusing to the public also, not just to us. So, please, counsel, please make a note of that. Okay, thank you so much. Mr. Sheta?
Thank you, Chair. I believe sometimes it's wiser not to be like, more than it should be patient. So, I believe this is, this is the time to... We were anticipating something to be submitted in response to our previous comments. I don't think this submission was responsive enough with respect to the continuation of the use continuation. And I believe the only way to put this to an end is to close this hearing and give him a chance until like the next hearing. And if they submit something, that's good for them. If not, just vote on it and enough is enough.
I agree. I agree, and what we've learned in the past with other very uncooperative property owners is when we close and ready for a vote, sometimes they get the fear of reality and all of a sudden become model citizens. This citizen has a heart, a very tall task to become model with. So, I'm not sure how much time we would give them between a close and a vote to allow for modeling, but I don't have a lot of tolerance for their terrible behavior and especially because it involves the adjoining property, which they and their representatives continue to say isn't our problem, isn't our domain. Yes, it is, because they have changed the character of the variance. By the way, I want to throw that in. The original variance was issued for one lot of 120 by 100, which you could argue, you know, why is that entitled to a variance in the first place? But back in the 90s, it was, or in the 70s, it was. But the other site never was. It had houses on it and when they were combined into a huge lot, it changed the character, the need for a variance, right? So, we would actually have to open up the variance again if you wanted to do this. And then you would have to say to us, why does this enormous 200 by 120-foot lot need a variance? So, that's my view on it. Also, I don't see how you overcome the change in the nature of the original grant. The conditions have changed. Okay, I'm sorry, so Commissioner Shabetta?
Thank you, Chair. So, we have a threshold issue of continuous use that has not been resolved. We have a common ownership that I think is also a threshold issue that is now evident. And we have a, what is down amount to a bad actor? I don't think, I don't see any need to continue dwelling on this. Short of, short of something magical happening, I don't see any need of dwelling on this any longer.
Okay. Thank you. Any other comments before we move on? Okay.
Okay, this completes the public review session for 10:00 a.m.
Okay, so it's 11:56, since it's a good chain. Let's take a 10-minute break and come back at 12:05. Are we ready? He's missing two of the commissioners. One of the commissioners. Yeah, okay, now we're ready.
Okay, we're recording?
Oh, no. Yes, recording.
Yes, we're live?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, so this is the public hearing, Board of Standards and Appeals Public Hearing for April 12, 2021, 10:00 a.m. session. The first item is SOC calendar continued hearings, item number 14, 12295 B.C., 15265 Rockaway Boulevard, Queens.
We should have Mr. Wright. Mr. Williams can be let in. He has his hand up for some reason. I think it's to be let in, but go ahead. Oh, and he's got his dog on the screen for me. Nice dog. Do, are both of those yours?
No, just the red one in front. That's just a little hiking buddy.
So, let's see, who else is in your team?
Joe Barbogallo and Chris.
Okay.
And Gene Bove maybe, maybe in there, but he might just be listening. He's one of my sound guys.
Yeah, I don't see Mr. Wright. Oh, there, I see, okay.
Okay, you ready?
Mr. Wright has to unmute himself, okay. All right.
Are you ready?
Yeah.
Okay, do you affirm to, raise your hand, do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board and to respond honestly to board member questions?
I do.
I do.
Chris?
Chris, say "I do," please.
Chris, can you hear us? Mr. Wright?
No. He's not muted.
Do you want to call? I mean, if you want to call in, it's 646-558-8656. ID number is 919-0056-6041 and the passcode is 231475.
I think Mr. Williams is calling him.
Yeah, you want me just to reach out real quick, find out what you just...
Yeah, there, oh, thank you.
Give me one second.
Okay, and we just played on the screen, the dial-in number and the web ID number. I don't think you need the passcode, right?
I don't know. I don't think so, but.
I've never used passcode, if you call in, I'm not sure.
If, if needed, we can begin.
Yeah, why don't we do that? I think most of the questions are directed at you anyway.
Yeah, 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 and I mean, he, he wants me to lead the discussion anyway. Um, I actually am not able to turn on my camera.
That's all right.
Okay, okay. All right.
You know, it's great to see your dog.
Certainly much more handsome than I.
Ah. Ah. Go ahead. So I think he just got a call. You're muted, Mr. Williams, so.
Actually, I just got entered into the hearing. Um, okay, so I've kind of distilled the comments, just, I, I think, very thorough job by the board in terms of reviewing all the materials. So the first thing, obviously, I'd like to just kind of get it out of the way. We have, I think, a solution that will satisfy the board in terms of the concern about shadows and, and the desire to mitigate the noise, and that's using a polycarbonate, a transparent top portion of the wall. So what we're suggesting is to keep the 20-foot wall and then to add a polycarbonate top five feet so that light can, can penetrate the area. And if I may share my screen and show you the, the, the concept, I, I have pulled this up. So.
Ooh, look at that.
Yeah, so the idea would be to, to maintain the, the wall with the trellis on it so that you would have the, the proper visual, um, you know, sort of disconnect between the parking and the operations going on the parking, but allow that light in. So the idea is we would maintain, you know, 15 feet and then, and then apply the polycarbonate barriers, and these have been used on railroads, so the same attenuation. And I think it, it's a great solution that kind of responds to your concerns and is able to maintain a lot of light. I don't think it necessarily will resolve your concern about the ivy growing on the wall because the shadow is still not going to reach that, but I can discuss that as well. So if this is something that pleases the board, we discussed this with the team. It's something I've been researching to make sure it's implementable here in a hybrid way. I think this is a solution that, that really provides for the best sort of response.
Wow, that's great.
Yeah.
That would do it for me, not that I'm a lighting, a natural lighting specialist, but your plants grow when they're on the other side of the windows, so conceptually, it should work.
Yeah, and I think in terms of the, the second part of that concern was about making sure that we can effectuate the landscape plan here. And I think the primary issue is on the ivy, you know, your, the, the demo in terms of whether that would survive in shadow is already kind of proved because we have shadow on the 23-foot building, which is sort of positioned in terms of solar access in the same way. So I think, I think we'll be fine there. And then what Mr. Barbogallo and I will, we'll detail this in the revised submission for the sound wall. And, you know, one of the things, and one of the primary reasons why, you know, after we did the shadow study, which I honestly think is very thoughtfully considered thing, is one of those things when you're working through the issues, you don't necessarily realize that there's a, you know, there's, there's a blowback from one environmental response and, and countervailing issues, and, and shadow is an issue here. So, you know, I had been researching this for some other projects and, and just to make sure that it fit, and obviously, the price is important because the, the cost issue is a big concern, but we believe that, that, you know, it's basically the same material cooked up in a different way. So I, I, I think we all feel comfortable. I just needed buy-in from the rest of the team on this concept.
Madam Chair, I'm sorry, Commissioner Otley-Brown.
Sorry, yeah, go ahead. I'm sorry, I didn't see you. I was looking at a little box down at the.
My only question is, what does this do to the plan to install the lighting in the wall two feet from the top?
So, so good, excellent point. Thank you for being part of the design team. So I, you know, what, what has been done now is that you have a PVC wall. So it's mounted, that wa, the, those lines can be mounted, you know, at various structural components. You're still going to need the same structural setup, which is where you would mount them anyway, on the wall. So I, I, I feel comfortable to say that we could achieve the same solution that would, you know, mount the, the, the lighting system at the same location and that it would be mounted, you know, at one of the structural access points.
Or why would then flow across the wall into the private home?
In terms of the light, yes. So maybe one of the things that we do is, if you see how this is broken up.
Yes.
Um, yeah, so I, I think what we, obviously, this is a good point in terms of the lumens, and if it's possible that we can get the, the, well, actually, the solution to that is, is, actually, we're going to have to research that.
Well, I think.
Lower the light, right?
Yeah, they need to be, they would need to be lowered, Joe. So maybe, Joe, if you're on.
Yeah, I, can you hear me?
Yeah, just state your name for the record.
Joseph Barbogallo, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Yeah, so, um, so Kevin, I do agree that, you know, it could be mounted on the, we do have, we're going to have a series of columns anyway to support the acoustic wall, and then, um, yeah, we could either put a, a partial blank off panel in the acrylic, again, I'm just talking out loud, and then mount the light in its current elevation. And the light does have, in fact, a directional shield that throws illumination away from that side. So we could take another look at that, but I think we can, I think if this, if this clear acrylic solution is something that is, is, is amenable, I think we can certainly take another look at the lighting to ensure that there is no illumination cast on the residential properties as we did before.
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's solvable either by shielding or directional or lowering. So we will, we will respond in kind to that. These types of things in a few minutes, you forget to consider the additional components, so appreciate that. Yeah, we'll, we'll make sure it works, Commissioner Otley-Brown.
Yes.
Um, so let me, if that's, if that's kind of a good game plan, I'll move on to the next issue. The next issue is sort of clarifying this notion of PCE trips. And, and the total trips that you had requested, and you go to page 10 of the PDF. I mean, I have it on, can everyone see this?
Yes.
Okay, so, oops, sorry, a lot of screens here. So there's, we basically did it in two ways. The PCEs is for DOT to basically show that the project doesn't have a total number of trips across certain thresholds. And that's where we multiply based on the axles, right? And, and you, you, and it's sort of understood that the impact of a, you know, multiple axle vehicle has a greater traffic impact than a single vehicle. The total trips that you see in, in the column on the left here is actually individual vehicles. And yes, it's a little odd to do partial counts, but that's the way the math comes out. And, and you kind of add them all up, and whether you impute them to one vehicle or not, it's just the ambiguities of a generalized, um, you know, type of ITE manual, International Traffic Engineers manual, that you do this to kind of see the total number of vehicles. And generally, what we do is we round these, but they, that, you know, you wind up rounding point three to zero. So it's basically, it's easier to understand it as one vehicle. But you basically take all of these and you sum them up, and then you come up with whole vehicles, and you, you basically intuit that is, as being over some time during this period, a certain number of vehicles would arrive. And that's because it's, of course, all of this stuff is sort of precision masquerading as accuracy, right, when you go through all these elements, and you get a generalized idea of what the trip gen would be. And so in terms of the response, you know, that there's, so there's literally four vehicles entering, seven exiting, and 11 total during the proposed ask hours. So, um, like, so the cells that are white, so from 9:00 to 7:00 AM. And, and the second part of your, so that's a total of almost 12 vehicles, basically about five entering, seven exiting during that period. And to your point, wow, that seems like a relatively low volume. And I think that's been the applicant's point and experience the whole time is that it's not like we're duplicating daytime operations during night. Uh, there are, there's a lot less traffic, and literally, this applicant has another warehouse right next to here that's 24 hours and compliant by zoning, and they don't have a lot of traffic at night, but they do have traffic at night. And the whole purpose of the flexibility to be able to have 24 hours is that the, the people that are coming and looking at these spaces now need the comfort to know that if they need to schedule an overnight arrival, that it's available. Else, otherwise, they'll go to another location. So now, having said that, whether it's seven, or eight, or five, or three, the, the main reason why we need this location rather than shifting traffic, and this, the first thing that we discussed with the applicant when we got engaged is, can't you just move this to Rockaway Boulevard and, and, you know, avoid this problem? The issue there is they, they've had historically two tenants. One used this space and one used Rockaway Boulevard, and so it would effectively diminish that. And the whole building is set up basically for those ops. So, you know, yes, there's relatively minor traffic. You're just talking about a few vehicles at night. But the point of the sound analysis and, and the point of the operating plan is to basically demonstrate that the site literally cannot have truck, two trucks moving. You would have calamity there. And so we, we indicated that the dispatcher will control, you know, so what happens is the vehicles come from the airport, right? Dispatcher is given notice that they're coming. The stuff is all scheduled in advance. And this notion that people would, um, you know, blow their horns when they're coming in and that sort of thing. I, I was not aware of that neighbor concern, but that's sort of the old way of doing business when people didn't have like real-world information about when the delivery comes, comes, GPSing the truck arriving and that sort of thing. So I, I don't believe that's a modern mainstay, but even if it is, we have no problem with, with putting together restrictive deck indicating those controls that one vehicle would move. A flag person would be allocated, that they would be assigned to the lot per the dispatcher's directions based on the arrival and departure of the vehicles. That's, you know, that's one of the reasons why we gave a more elaborate operating plan in here so you can clearly see some of the pieces. And so that's, that's the idea. And as far as the noise considerations related to that, we really weren't trying to obfuscate this notion that multiple vehicles were in the lot. That was just the reality of the movements. But the point is, even if you got one vehicle at a time, even if you had five vehicles coming in one at a time in the lot, the noise analysis is not cumulative, the way that seeker looks at it. It's noise code. So each impulse that exceeds thresholds is something we have to mitigate. So literally, one truck with all of its movements, docking, loading, unloading, and all of that are considered. You know, when I tried to outline a methodology at the request of the board, it clearly indicated that we took the worst-case condition of the peak noise, not some average or anything of that, at multiple locations adjacent to the wall. And then the last issue, this goes to both multiple members of, of the board and the chair, was about, did we analyze second floor, right? And one of the things that I supplied is we indicated it's easier to read these things and understand the impact of the wall and how it's attenuating noise if you have a graphic. And if you go, um, let me point this up. I know I'm running through a lot of, lot of issues. Um. If you go. Oops, there it is. So we, we supplied some contour mapping to show it two elevations, five feet and 15 feet. So the bottom level shows five feet, so noise levels at five feet from a truck at that location. Bear in mind, we took at one at here and one in the back corner to do the same type of analysis. This is without the barrier. So you have like basically 85 here at the center radiating outward. This is the imposition of the barrier in the line of field at five feet. This is the imposition of the barrier at 15 feet high, approximating the height of a window. Anything above that would be less, you know, the sound reduces as, as the height increases from the distance from the source of the noise. So, you know, the barrier effectively, you know, this, you can see there's a little bit of bleed here, and so that extra five feet, it's still below most of the thresholds, but that extra five feet was really needed to make sure that every impulse noise was covered. And, and that's basically what these graphics show in multiple scenarios. So here's the truck in the back corner, right? And, and here's what, what the sound would be. Here's the barrier at five feet. Here's the barrier at, you know, at 15 feet level, basically the same. You have a 55-foot contour here, so still relatively low. And, and so that kind of explains that, um, and if, obviously, if there's any questions on any of these, please.
I, I have a question about that, because I, I did see that diagram, and I saw you took it at 15 feet. But a fif, 15 feet, these are typically older houses with 12-foot-high ceilings, arguably, you know, so, so that the lower floor has a higher ceiling, not sure. But so then, when, when I looked at 15 feet, I'm kind of like, well, that's probably the level of the bottom of the windowsill, so you're not at the window level. So my, the reason I asked the question is, can, can you take this, do this model for 20 feet high?
Of course, of course. And, I mean, all it's going to show, I think the reason why we did it at 15 is because basically in all areas it shows compliance, but yes, we can absolutely cut it at any level. Um, so I, you know, we could return this with a response raising it to 20, uh, which, yeah, so that's no, no problem at all.
Okay.
But the, the, basically, the mathematical results, you know, are sort of, you know, you have a little wave, if you were to section it as you, you know, so vertical sectioning is a, is, is actually, to be quite honest, is, it's like an extra $4,000 in the software, so that the linear section is, you know, it says this, it does the same thing, but it's a slice, right, at that level, same concept. So we can certainly give you a 20, and then you can kind of compare those. But the math behind this is, you know, was, the, the wall was sized, and I think we were really close to where we could have dropped it to 15 feet. Um, but the seeker analysis where you can't increase the noise a little above three decibels sort of prevented us from doing that, but it's all, it's noise compliant, code compliant at like 15 feet, but it's not seeker compliant until we go to 20.
Okay.
Um.
Oh, I just wanted to, before I forget, I just wanted to point out something for the benefit of the architect who would, whoever, or engineer who would be making the application. Um, over the course of the week, there was a little bit of a discussion about building a 12, a 20-foot-high wall on the property line. I see Commissioner Sheta's hand up just a second. And so, you know, whether you could build a 20-foot-high wall on a property line. So we were looking at the regulations for walls in residence districts and so on. Um, and in residence districts, you're not allowed to have walls that are that high, but in manufacturing districts you are. So from the perspective, and since this is a use waiver where there are no bulk regulations, I just want to point out for the benefit of who's ever going to actually file the drawings, that, that, that needs to be pointed out to an objecting plan examiner. It's a use waiver with no bulk regulations, and M District allows walls of any height to protect adjoining properties from the disturbance of the manufacturing use. So that, that should be like kept somewhere in the corner, a note in the corner where i, if you get an objection, that's your response, okay? And if you need a letter of no objection from us, then that's where we would go.
I appreciate that, Chair. I, in fact, I, I will, I plan to put that note exactly on the drawings when I file.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Right, I'm sorry, go ahead. Commissioner Sheta, you had a question?
Yeah, I was muted, I'm sorry, I apologize. Kevin, can you go back to the plots that you just showed? I, I want to ask about something, make sure that I understand it right.
Yeah, can you, um, can you see?
Uh, hold on, I'm trying to put it back. Uh, hold on, I'm trying to put it back. No, it's, it's kind of minimized. I don't know. Yeah, yep, now, now I can see. So I, I, I see that the contours are kind of circles. Are, are we treating the noise source here as isotropic uh, source that emitting noise in all directions in the same pattern? Is that the way it's modeled?
It, it is, yes. I mean, until you have a barrier, um, but this also includes noise reflectivity, you know, in, you know, from all buildings and sources that are present there. So, yeah, but, um, you know, absent a barrier and you can see how the, how the contour moves, right? In response to an object, you know, and you, you can see the little variations in the circles here um, as it encounters obstructions, um, so.
Isn't this kind of like an deviation from the real nature of the noise source here? Because when we look at the, let's say we're looking at a menu board, for example, here. When we look at the menu board chart from the manufacturer, you have two directions for the noise propagation. You have the axis, the axis direction, which is like perpendicular, or I would say like along the axis of the wave. And then you have the perpendicular direction where you encounter less intensity for the wave slash noise.
Well, I'm, I'm not, sorry, Commissioner.
I'm, I'm not sure if it should be similar here and, and with, whether this approach is actually conservative or it's on the other side.
So the differences between a menu board is that's at certain sound waves um, that, that do cutoffs at low and high frequencies. And the menus, those menu board speakers are designed uh, so that their wavelengths do not propagate through space in the same way that a truck vehicle, for instance. But this is far more conservative than that sort of analysis because basically, so say your monitoring equipment was located here, right? And, and, and was getting direct engine noise. So we basically located it at a place which picked up the loudest noise. And this is based off of hundreds of noise studies. And then we assumed that that propagation was equal all the way around that, that center, right? And so we are propagating the highest level noise related to each type of noise source monitored. So whether it was air braking, whether it was turning movements, uh, whether it was, uh, you know, the, the truck going, going and doing a right turn. So all the most common types of noise generations were basically propagated at the highest recorded level at each point in a circular fashion. And granted, that propagation is going to be in the direction of where the vehicle is turning. But you cannot account for every micro simulation movement. So we just assume the worst.
I'm not asking you.
Wait, wait, wait. Yeah, go ahead. I'm sorry.
I'm just trying to finish. We assume the worst case condition and in all directions. And, you know, I, I don't know if I'm going to be able to explain this to you, but I'll try my best, so.
I got it. I wanted to save your time. I heard what I wanted to hear. You, you kind of circle, you kind of circle around the truck during the monitoring and pick the loudest spot. And you assume that this is going to be applicable on all directions.
Yeah, exactly. I mean, it's, it's, it's over design, but that's how you kind of have to do this. Yes, sir. Yeah.
What is the distance between, let's say for, for, uh, you have four diagrams here. Let's say for the first one, uh, what is the distance roughly between the source and the wall?
Uh.
Roughly, it doesn't need to be.
Yeah, I mean, this is probably about 10 feet.
Okay, and this, the first like, uh, thick circle is about
Yeah.
Probably five feet and then the second one is 10 feet?
Yeah, yeah, that's about right. Yeah.
And then this guy, that third one is about 20, am I correct?
Yeah, yeah, approximately, I think. Yeah, that's, that sounds about right. I mean, I, if I, I wish I could have these transparent and oversight plans so I could see it. Yeah, I mean, the idea is if you think about where this wall is, this is kind of the furthest stretch that a truck could get back and make these movements, you know? And then, and then the same thing like here. So this is at the corner of the wall, right? And so, you know, maybe it would be one of the things that might help here, uh, is showing you the area so you can kind of cross reference where the wall is at. But yeah, those are approx, those are approximately correct. I, um, just in terms of my knowledge of where these locations are.
I, I have a question about how this models reflectivity. So your truck is right there in the sort of the branch of the building in the sort of the crook of the building. So that's when you're seeing those waves move towards the building. Are they also taking into account reflectivity in this model?
It's all designed based on the material composition of the building. So, yeah, you're getting, you, it is including bounce back, you know, in, in the, in the analysis. So all of that reflectivity and, and the wall is actually reflective as well. Um, so all of that is based on the height and the composition of the building is included in the modeling scenarios.
Okay. Oh, so that actually makes sense. So when you look up at the one with the wall, the one right above, there's more sound now in that area near the
Exactly.
Action. It's noisier there because of the vibration between the, the new wall and the existing.
Yeah, precisely. You got 70 here where you had 65 before. Yeah.
Interesting. Okay. Thank you.
I'm sorry.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Yes.
You got it. Um, so I, I don't know if, if Chris, Mr. Wright joined.
Yeah, I'm not here. Can you hear me now?
Yeah, yeah.
Sorry, sorry.
That's all right.
Um, so, so the other elements, and I, I don't want to have forgotten anything, but I think there's a discussion on the term of relief, right? That, that the board wanted to have discussion of. And then, uh, I think Chris had some technical issues of how we draft the restrictive deck, whether there's a model you have that we would plug this in. Yeah.
Yes. So I, I can jump right to the restrictive deck. We have, I think Chris or Mr. Wright, you've, you've written some of these restrictive decks and you already got this operational plan that's in the tech memo. It kind of goes through step by step, all the sort of promises of operation that there'll be a flag person, that it's one truck at a time maneuvering, that, uh, whatever the other things are, right? So it would simply be a kind of, um, you know, that kind of list of whereas, whereas is. And then these are the commitments being made that you would just drop in more or less from the operational plan. Um, and, uh, so you could do a draft based on if, have you already done a restricted deck? Am I remembering correctly?
No, we, we, I haven't done one for this, but if, if your lawyer can send me a template, I can fill it in.
Okay, so, um.
Place may have changed over the years. So if he sends me the current template, we'll put it in the operational plan and we'll draft it up and send it to you.
Okay, so I see, uh, Chase and Yar are on, right? Kurt's not on, right? Um, anyway, if one of you could send Mr. Wright a standard, um, uh, restrictive deck for almost really almost anything, and then you can insert into the deck those.
That'd be great. I appreciate that. Thank you.
And Mr. Williams could check that you're catch, capturing all of the things. Because as I was reading the tech memo, there are places where there's a, there's an operational plan. And then there's another place where there's sort of more operational plan. So I just want to make sure that all of the terms are caught. So we don't go back and say, hey, wait a minute, it's in your tech memo, but it's not in the RD, right?
I, I'll get to a draft as soon as I can with everything. I know it's been scattered a bit. I apologize for the multiple submissions. We're just trying to get it all in.
Yeah, that was my, my fault, by the way.
That's my fault.
I was trying to get it in early, a little bit early, that the techni- the technical part get in early. So I, you know, Chris was trying to provide a complete application. So that was just a circumstance of the submission. I'm sorry.
Uh, no, but it's, but just in future, because we don't know why we're seeing so many with the same date. If, if you know it's being submitted for the second time and it's the same thing, just a cover letter that says this was already submitted, please ignore the prior submission. Or this was already submitted, but there were changes. Please ignore the prior submission, which isn't complete. So then our notation somewhere that says revise. Yeah, revised would be good. That way we can supersede. You know, you could say revised intended to supersede the submission made yesterday or made on the 22nd or whatever. Since they were all submitted on the same two days, that's what made it confusing. Blazer hands up. Go ahead.
Um, couple of comments with regards to the operational plan. Uh, Mr. Williams, you mentioned that, uh, dispatcher, uh, the truck, uh, will make a call and notify the warehouse that they will be coming at a certain time. That would, uh, basically ensure that a flagger is there, present without having the truck idling or anything like that. So please include that in the operational plan also. Uh, the other thing is that there were two plans that were submitted, the supplemental plan and revised plan. And there are two sets of information. They should be all consolidated, especially the landscaping plan. And some of them, they were not all consistent. So please consolidate those plan, those two sets, uh,
One set.
In one set. And I think it would be good if, um, Madam Chair, if you're okay with it, add a note to the plan that a flaggers will be provided at all hours, um, in the surface lot and the base. So that's also made very clear to everybody, whoever's going to review it, whether DOB or wherever, that that's condition is there.
Okay, so that'll be also a condition of the approval. But yeah, anything that's comfortable to put on the drawings, it's always easier for us to, even though, even though it's not like DOB reviews flaggers, but at least it's on a drawing. That's enough.
Okay, we can do both those things.
Yeah, yeah, we can.
Once approved plans with all, all of them one and we'll add flagger note.
Yes. Okay, great. Okay. Commissioner Sean to take down your hand.
I'll, I'll do it. There you go. Oh, I can't.
Nope.
I can't. I'm not a co-host. Can, um, Steve make me a co-host, please? Okay, uh, anything else you want to go through?
The one last issue is just the term.
The term.
I know you want to not remove the term. I just wanted to ask if we could maybe have the 20 year term we had before, but I'd like you to just please consider a term that allows them to operate. Thank you.
Okay, so we haven't discussed any, a term less than the existing 20 year. Um, I, and so I'm not sure how commissioners feel about, um, imposing a shorter term. Um, because nobody's brought it up, so, um, I, I don't personally feel like it's necessary, but that's because I think the owner and, and as I said before, the owner is extremely well and committed consultants have been really working to prove to us that this is going to work as opposed to, don't worry, take our word for it, it'll be fine, which we get from a lot of other applications. Um, that's the reason that I'm not that concerned and that if a neighbor has problems with the site, then, um, hopefully they will know that they can come to, um, the DSA and say we are problematic with the site. So, yeah, I don't know if other commissioners want to comment on that.
I, I agree with you, Madam Chair. I, I think the applicant has been very responsive and, uh, and has been working with us and trying to address the concerns. And so I'm okay with the 20.
All right, um, anybody else want to comment on that?
Okay, with the 20 year.
All right, and by the way, you have time to think about it. You don't have to decide now because we're not, I don't think we're able to close this, right? There's still, or are we? Are we able to close this? There, uh, no, the secret, environmental, okay.
I mean, there is, this is also a non-secret, uh, sort of tech memo review. However, I don't, I don't know if there'll be another round of comments or not. I'm not sure.
Can you talk to that?
Yeah. Like, yeah, can you elaborate?
Kevin, I think we're in pretty good DP DOT, but maybe you can, you can fill me in.
So, um, I mean, DOT didn't, they wanted us to revise the trip generation, uh, you know, but I don't think they had any concerns that we were over the limits. The major thing was, uh, the site plan access issue. And I've had communication. So there were two issues. One was the trip gen, which is they really just need to, to understand how the operation worked. Um, and, you know, I, I don't think that triggered and, you know, there were no concerns that we were triggering any impact. You know, as the number of trips is not any different from what was previously analyzed. Um, but the only other issue was resolving a concern about the original site plan being modified. And, you know, my understanding with DOT is that has been resolved. We just haven't gotten, you know, I've had communications with them. And maybe Tracy, if you wanted just to check in with the Director of Traffic Engineering and Planning on the site plan, um, that, that would resolve that. But I, I've already had communications with Matt Lorenz on the curb cut plan. Um, and he should have been able to provide comment, but I don't think there's any substantive differences between what he asked. Um, yeah, and it's, I mean, uh, you know, like you said, if it's, if the, this is a tech memo and the, you know, it's, I don't know if it's subject to those other agencies review. Um, I mean, we prepared them as if they were. Um, and, uh, we stand behind the, the analysis that's been done. So I, that's, that's basically all I can say. Obviously, the applicant is desperate to close the application, so, yeah.
So.
I think, I think, Kevin, sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, no, so, um, that's the only thing. I'm relying on our seeker commander to, um, if it's a non-seeker issue, then we're not forbidden from closing. Well, we know that we have open issues, but I'm confident that those issues will be addressed um, in the interim before a decision, so.
Right.
Request for one additional study about the noise propagation at the 20 foot level. The issue of the light, if you use a transparent portion on the top five feet. Um, and the restricted declaration, which is always a back and forth between counts, their council and our council. Right?
We could, we could always reopen if, if there's an issue.
We have to, so, yeah. Um, so I think before we decide whether we're closing, we should see if there's any members of the public who want to speak on this.
Hey, the application before us is 12295 VC, 15265 Rockaway Boulevard, Queens. You wish to call in, it is 646-558-8656. And the Zoom webinar ID number is 919-0056-6041. And the passcode is 231475. If you are in Zoom, in the Zoom room already, please press star nine to raise your hand and star six to unmute.
Okay, so I just want to query with commissioners if anyone has an issue with us. Um, I, I see one caller who is a phone number. That may be actually one of you. If that person wants to speak, you have to raise your Zoom hand by dialing star nine. Um, everyone else I think is associated with another application. So, um, so are commissioners okay with us closing and then accepting all these materials? Yeah, Vice Sir Sean.
Uh, Madam Chair, there's one thing I forgot to mention. I think in the plan, there should be note added, no honking, no, um, all of eh, along the base, not just, uh, by the parking lot, but also by the Rockaway Boulevard.
You wanted a sign, Commissioner.
Right, along each one of the bays saying no honking, no, uh, no idling, turn of the, something to that effect along all the bays.
Yeah, we'll do that.
Or you can even have it at the end and also at the entrance gate, so everybody knows it.
Okay.
So that should, that note should be clearly indicated in the plan also.
Okay.
Oh, it's no honking, no backup signals, right? Or whatever the correct.
No idling.
No back signals, no idling.
And, and engines off at docking, right? Will.
Right.
Yeah.
Um, also, we learned from the neighbor, no radios.
Yeah, that, so that was another point is when people were out unloading and loading, they were playing music, right? Um, yeah.
Yeah. Uh, no, 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 okay. Uh, and then, you know, throw in the respect your neighbors to the sign, that's our score.
At the bottom, yeah.
Yeah, because that's, people may not understand, they think it's a mean boss who just won't let them do anything, right? But it's actually issues about neighbors. So, um, okay, uh, that's good. And, and so you'll have those signs located and then on the drawings located where all of them are. Okay. Any other little things that should be added to the drawings last minute? Does anybody else have any problems with us? Anybody have any problems with us closing this? Anybody have any problems with us closing this? A simple head nod from people? No? Okay. All right then. So how much time to respond to these things?
Um, Kevin, how much time you need to?
Well, I mean, my, so to do the, the cut, I mean, I have it this afternoon, so do the 20-foot cut for the noise analysis. I can have that this afternoon. Um, I mean, I think that Joe, you need, you need to reanalyze the lumens and position the, the uh the lights, right, and put the notes. So maybe you're the driver of the time here. And then Chris, of course, you need to draft the restricted deck.
Yeah, I can have that in a couple of days. I can get it out, but to go back.
What do you think, Joe?
I can, I can probably turn this around in a week's time, where realistically I have to, you know,
So should we say, so we can submit in two weeks? Do you want to back in from there, Chair?
Yeah, so if, if, so the problem is that it's unlikely the restrictive deck is two weeks, that's a back and forth with council, right? And then we also do want to have time for the agencies to respond to the environmental review. So
Yeah, Kevin, is that change in the noise going to affect the current?
It's just a graphic. Yeah, they, they have the mathematical model that they'll
Right, they have the same amount of feet and everything. Okay, so that, those reviews hopefully will be done by the end of the month. Um, there's been a few delays lately, but.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, it's taking them, so 30, 30 days. I mean, could we?
Yeah, so do we say four weeks to submit then? Does that sound right?
It's fine.
Okay.
We tried to get in earlier, but that, that gives us time. That's fine.
So the instruction basically is anything that needs agency review must come in as soon as you can. So there's time turnaround. So when I say four weeks to submit, that's the completed submission. But um, for instance, with the restrictive deck, it should have been, you know, in the four weeks, you should have turned it around already and it's fine, right? And in terms of the agency review, um, we hope that within that time period, it'll be turned around enough times, so it's fine. But um, we can always, we, since we can't control the agency review, as long as your materials are in um as early as possible, then at least there's time for the agency, right?
Um, DOT likes to look at the restrictive decks too.
So we'll have that. So um, Chase Vine has his hands up.
There are many resolutions with restrictive declarations available just through searching our BSA decisions portal on our website. Uh, I will identify a appropriate boilerplate or, or sample. Um, but in the meantime, searching our resolutions through our website is a very good starting place.
You mean, in other words, to find out which case has a resolution?
They, the copies of the restrictive declaration are contained within the resolutions available through our website.
Wow, okay, I didn't know that. There we go, another thing. And then since they have to be recorded against the properties, you can find them on ACRIS once you um know which property it is, so you can actually have.
Yeah, I'll take a look at that, but if you could send me Chase a sample, I'd appreciate it if you don't mind.
Okay, but let's just say he doesn't get around to it. You need to turn this around fast and he just gave you a way to find them quickly. So you could do that like when you hang up the proverbial Zoom phone. You could actually go online, find one, and now you have a sample as opposed to Chase is going to be in here for today and tomorrow, right? The same. Okay, um, and
Yeah, thank you. I just want to make sure, I, I have a question to Kevin. Kevin, when you do the 20-foot height, uh, are, do you think that fence is going to be like contributing by any chance or 20-foot and a inch, the fence will be down and the propagation will be like free of any obstruction? Is this the way that you're going to be doing it?
The fence is on the other side.
Oh, yeah. I'm talking about the acoustical barrier.
Yeah.
It's 20-foot tall, right?
Yeah.
When you study the propagation, the propagation of, of the noise wave, since you're doing the 20 feet, what, what my understanding is, the wall is not going to be contributing by any chance. Am I correct, or is this the way it's going to be done?
What do you mean contributing?
So far, you have two scenarios, one with the wall, one without. At five feet, the wall has an impact. It mitigates. At 10 feet, 15 feet, 20 feet, it's like critical. 20 feet and a inch, the wall is not there, the way
Yeah, so it, it actually is overdesigned by, you know, a few, like a foot. So, I mean, it actually shows, and if that's what you mean, is like, if there was a little bit of impulse over that, is that what you mean that that it's, you know, we want to make sure we have a margin of error there, or?
No, my point is, let's say you're not doing 20 feet, you're doing 20 feet and one inch.
Right.
Are you going to be having two scenarios, one with a wall and one without? And if yes, why?
Yes.
Why?
Yeah, one at 20 feet and one with no wall. Yeah. Those are the scenarios. At, at four different locations with peak noise levels.
Because the
For a specific location.
But the model Wait, wait, the model input is propagation, obstruction up to 20-foot high that has a certain STC rating.
Exactly.
Right, and so, and, and reflectivity has to be brought into that too.
It's all included.
C is reflecting and bouncing off against the other wall, so it needs to remain in the model because arguably, the bounce angle from the wall opposing will send the sound a little higher than
All of those, yeah, so, so all of those, all of that bleed and everything is considered in the sound exposure. So, I mean, the fact is, if you wanted us to do 25 feet, I could give you a cut at 25 feet.
You know, I, I don't want to, I, we don't want to do 25.
Yeah.
We want to do 20 plus one inch.
Yeah, of course.
The wall, the wall is not there. I want to see like the free field.
Oh, I, I see what you're saying, Chair. Uh, you want to see it above 20, 20, so like without the wall at 20 feet, one inch, of course, or six inches.
You want to see how much, how much is going to filtrate into the adjacent property?
Yeah, I, I am totally, yeah, I, I, I totally get it. I mean, the fact is, I believe that's the way the graphics read, but I will, or they're, they're supposed to be interpreted, is that that's like above the wall level, but very good point. I totally get it, and yes, I will supply that. Thank you.
Okay, great. All right then.
Yeah, sorry for not understanding, but that makes perfect sense. Yeah.
All right, do you want to make a motion to close? So I'd like to make a motion to close and um four weeks to submit, but with as soon as you can submissions of data that is requires agency review of information that requires agency review. Okay, motion to close.
Chair Promoter?
Hi.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Hi.
Commissioner Oatley Brown?
Hi.
Commissioner Sheta?
Hi.
Commissioner Shabeta?
Hi.
And I just want to reiterate, thank you so much to the owner and team for being so responsive and creative in your solution making. So um, that's what gets a project there. So appreciate getting your project there like that. Okay.
Absolutely.
Very much. Thank you.
Item number, sorry, thank you. Item number 155545 VC, 63 Kingsland Avenue, Brooklyn. It's 1:00.
I know, we'll do the best we can. Didn't realize how many phones there were in the morning. Um, I don't see Mr.
Just call Safara, right?
Yeah, but there's one person who called in. If Mr. Safara, please raise your Zoom hand by dialing star nine. That's last three digits, 711, on the phone number. You're texting him, Tony?
No, I, I thought I had his email, uh, his um cellphone number. I don't.
Jaleen, do you have his contact information?
Looking it up now.
The person with the phone number got off. If anyone who's in the waiting room, the Zoom room, is associated with this park project, please raise your Zoom hand.
It's 5545 VC, 63 Kingsland Avenue, Brooklyn. Only the people for that case should be ready.
Give it another few seconds, but otherwise, let's just make that second call because we have so many. Okay, let's just make the second call because there's plenty of other cases that we can be reviewing, so let's go to the next one, 64.
Hi, um, he's joining us.
Oh, he is? Okay.
He's there.
He isn't there, though. I hope he's in the right room.
Um, if we could go to the next one and call him after.
Yeah, okay, good. Second call? All right, second call.
Item number 16, 64888 VC, 2107 Richmond Road, Staten Island.
Mr. Rampula. I don't see him in the waiting room. He may not have realized, though, wasn't next online.
I just sent him a message.
Oh, you got it already, Jim? Okay.
So just while we're waiting for Mr. Rampula, um, to clarify with Tracy, the tech memo is a is that, that's a non-seeker issue, correct?
Correct.
So we technically could close this. I know he's, this applicant is desperate.
Yes.
Um, so we technically close this. I don't think we have other Yeah, I don't think we had any open issues, though, even.
Right.
And I'm sure Mr. Rampula would not put up a fight.
Yeah, the NAG deck was issued in 1992, and since then, we've just basically been dealing with it, with like technical memos um outside a seeker when, when an issue came up. So that's how we dealt with this.
So, um, how about this?
There's not even a seeker number, so.
Hey, I hope he can hear us talking about all this. So Mr. Rampula is coming in.
There he is.
Okay. As soon as you can hear us, unmute yourself, Mr. Rampula.
Okay.
Yeah, but raise your right hand. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board and to respond honestly to board member questions?
I do.
Please proceed.
I was here for a review session. Um, I'm glad that everything was to the board's satisfaction. Uh, we even put in the do not enter sign, uh, two of them that the DOT had asked for. And as far as Commissioner Sheta's uh request or question, the, the grades are very close to what was on the drywall boring plan.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I, I want to thank you for being so responsive, so quickly to board comments. It's really a pleasure to be able to move an application forward so quickly. Um, and uh, as you heard, there's no objection to us closing, and since the DOT issues are non-seeker, we're not prevented by the rules from closing with an open
Oh, that's wonderful. Thank you.
Okay, so we'll give DOT enough time to respond, and if there was any response, maybe there's nothing left to do. Um, I don't think there were any submissions that were needed by Mr. Rampula, right? We don't have any changes to the drawings or anything needed. Um, so then I'd like to go to the public.
This application is 64888 VC, 2107 Richmond Road, Staten Island. Did you wish to call in? It is 646-558-8656. The Zoom webinar ID number is 919-0056-6041. Passcode is 231475. If you're already in the Zoom room, please press star nine to raise your hand and star six to unmute to speak.
Okay, so uh, Mr. Rampula, you mentioned that you'd already put the parking, the, the eggs, the, what is it, no exit signs?
Uh, do not enter.
Oh, do not enter signs. So um, are there, those on the drawings?
Yes, they are.
Okay, so then you don't even need to change the drawings. So no submission.
Oh, no, no, sorry. Strike that, strike that, strike that.
Why are you saying no submission? It's just the DOT issue.
DOT, sorry, strike.
No, no, it's not a strike that, for there's the architectural versus sort of the non-seeker issue. So from the architectural, say, BSA side, there is no submission. That's what I'm looking for also. And it's because the only open issue is the DOT sign-off, right?
Right.
Yeah.
Right.
So
Then she get back to you this week, right, Tracy?
Yeah, I believe so. They're, they're moving very fast on this one.
Okay, so, uh, what do we say then? We say two weeks? Is that enough?
I think that's enough.
So Mr. Rampula, I know you have a real issue with your tenant. What are we, what are we talking about timing-wise?
Um, last month?
Last month. Okay.
If you can do it on the 27th, is that, is that the, that, what you were thinking of?
Yeah, so when we have no submissions, and it's not a killer schedule, which I can't tell without looking, I sometime, I try to put it on for the next hearing.
Oh, that would be most appreciated.
Whether, so that's what we'll do. We'll take a look, and in the next few days, we'll see how DOT is doing because we don't send out the schedule until like Thursday, Friday of this week. So that'll give us enough time to see if DOT is going to move a little bit because I don't, what I don't want to do is put it on for decision and then we just don't have an answer.
I got it.
Okay.
Thank you for the consideration.
Okay. Uh, all right, so motion to close then.
Chair Promoter? Hi. Vice Chair Chanda?
Hi.
Commissioner Oatley Brown?
Hi.
Commissioner Sheta?
Hi.
Commissioner Shabeta?
Thank you all, especially staff for their hard work. Thank you, thank you again.
Thank you.
Okay, go to Linden Boulevard, next one?
Yeah. Actually, do we, oh, we, oh, we have Mr. Safara called in, so Linden might be a long one, so let's go to Mr. Safara.
Okay, he's there?
Yeah.
Okay, uh, recalling item number 1555, 5545 VC, 63 Kingsland Avenue, Brooklyn. Mr. Safara, please unmute. Can you hear me? Mr. Safara, please unmute.
This is Carl, right?
Yes.
Hope you can do it.
Can you hear me?
Yes, now I can. Okay, let me sway you in real quickly before anything else happens. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board and to respond honestly to board member questions?
Yes, I do.
Okay, please present.
Okay, I was present for the um, this morning session. Uh, by mistake, I thought that the continued hearing would be tomorrow, but nonetheless, let us continue. Uh, with respect to the Alt One application, I did file an Alt One application. I gave you the number of it in the DOB now, but I don't know, that's an elusive type of system. Uh, the way it works is I have to put in, or the filing representative puts in the first part of the information, then the uh designer has to put in additional information, followed by the owner putting in their information. Uh, perhaps they can follow up on their end, I don't know. But um, I guess I just have to get somebody who's more experienced with DOB now who can enter. Perhaps they can follow up on their end, I don't know, but I guess I just have to get somebody who's more experienced with DOB Now who can enter all the particulars that they require. But we will make that application.
Okay, so can I then ask you, because I don't know how DOB Now works, I admit.
I don't either, apparently.
I admit, I also don't know how to really find what I need most of the time on it. Does it still require that you file a PW1?
No, the system itself is the PW1 and all the other documents. It's just that I can only put in a certain portion of it, and then the other parties have to contribute and, and enter their documentation.
Okay, so could you ask them, please, to do that, but to the extent you're able to get, I don't know, a screenshot or something? Screenshot is all you can get of what you put in. Can you do that, please? Because it doesn't show up when we research as a stranger to the site.
I can try. It could be that they found the submission deficient and, and eliminated it, in which case I have to go to a more experienced person who's been through some of these. As you can see, it's, it's an elusive system. I hear nothing but complaints about it.
Yeah, I know. This worked so well. It wasn't broke.
That's what I hear from the reps when I go to hearings, and a number of people at DOB have shared the same opinion.
Yeah, oh, great.
Yeah. It's difficult to extrapolate information, and you're constantly getting knocked off the site, so it's a difficult thing. But so much for the application. You have the information from DOC, DEC's monitoring. The. Feeding of the wells continues, but now it's been reduced to annual in view of the fact that the, the number of counts in hydrocarbon has diminished severely. So we're expecting that probably by the next. Next period of time when a report is due, we may get a, a letter of no further action. But that won't be for a while. With the respective parking spaces, weather hasn't allowed us as yet to finish and to do the, the parking spaces for two exterior spaces up at the other end of the property where the sign is located. But we intend to do that.
Can you explain how that works, though? So I'm looking at a drawing site, space one and two.
Yes.
Mine.
Yes.
Is it required then that you. Close the dispenser that you access from that side?
Yes, if those spaces are occupied, then we would put cones so as to be able to alert customers not to use that pump island, but to use the, the first pump island near the office, which is the primary one. But when there, when there are no parking, then we can use both sides, but very seldom do we get four cars on the property. Most people go to the first pump island and use that.
Does one have to be handicapped? I think that was a question.
I don't believe so.
So these spaces are for cars awaiting service, no?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. It's not that there's a convenience store or anything like that.
No, there's not.
Right?
We very seldom, those are spillover spaces. The, the, most people that come to the gas station are going to be parked immediately right inside the bays because there are sufficient bays to receive the customers who need repairs.
Okay, so, so in fact, that's, it's, it's really not customer parking. It's cars awaiting.
No, no, it's not. And anybody that, that needs to use those spaces, any need to use those spaces, those would be attended parking. We would have our, our attendant. Position the car in that space.
Okay, so is that satisfactory, Commissioner Vice Chair? Yeah, okay, okay, thank you.
Okay, so we will get around to doing that, that striping. I was by the station yesterday, and I saw that in fact, the two no parking signs have been installed. The two metal signs, red lettering on white background, as you see on the drawings. I'll send you those pictures. They're, they've been installed. And. With respect to a banner that was there, that's no longer there. You'll see that in the picture. I know there was some concern about that. Regarding car washing, car washing is an occasional thing. Apparently, when the building was built, they did more car washing in, in service bays, so they're equipped with drains, but. The operation doesn't advertise itself as car washing. What it does is if there's an occasional need for a car wash, the bays are equipped to do that, and car washing would occur inside rather than outside in the open area. And I think that's all of the questions that you had asked. If there's anything else, I'd be glad to answer.
Okay, so go ahead.
Sorry, I just wanted to, the site, when I went to the site was on, in March, so I'm glad to see the banner has been removed because the banner was specifically pointing towards car washing, so.
Oh, you mean it advertised car washing?
Yeah.
I don't know why they would do that because it's not, it, it's an occasional operation where. If a customer brings in his car and it has substantial repairs and it's, it's in the bay for any period of time, gathers dirt, gathers dust, they want to release the car to the customer in a clean condition. That's really the only intent of having the incidental car washing.
These days, maybe people are struggling and they try to think of alternate business opportunities.
Not for sure, but I don't think very many people are going to gas stations to get their car washed.
Okay, so then, just when, I think the only open issue really was the striping, right?
Striping, and I'll show you a picture of the signs that we discussed, no parking on the sidewalk.
So you'll provide a photo of. Provide a photo of.
Of both, of the signs as well as the striping.
Okay.
Madam Chair, I'm sorry to keep going back. I, I just looked through the photo that I had taken of the sign. It said professional car wash and detailing, so please make sure that sign is never going to be put up.
Okay, I will, I will alert the owner to the fact that if this is a sign that he had, don't display it any longer. And I can say, as of yesterday, when I went by, which was later in the day, it's about five o'clock in the afternoon, I passed by, I snapped the shot, and it was not there.
So, to that point, Vice Chair Shonda, do you want that to be a condition, that this not be advertised as a car washing location? Because the car washing is incidental to what they actually do on the site, right?
Right. I, I think it makes a difference if it's incidental versus if it becomes a primary, so that's why I, I, having that sign almost makes it a more of a primary. And the fact that all of those bays are equipped to handle it makes it feasible.
Yeah. Okay.
And then you have vehicles waiting.
Right.
It changes the operational plan.
Right, so just to clarify, so this is, the, the type of services that are provided on the site are what, Mr. Sulfaro?
Minor repairs, inspection, lubatorium, and the incidental car washing.
Okay. So, so it's fair to say that the permitted uses on the site are minor repairs, inspection, lubatorium, and any car washing is incidental to those uses, right?
We would agree with that.
Okay, so that'll be a condition of the.
No problem with that.
Okay.
And probably something I have to put into the, the new DOB Now application.
Yes, exactly. All right then, so. I want to open it to the public, yes.
So this item is 5545 BZ, 63 Kingsland Avenue, Brooklyn. Did you wish to call in? It is 6465588656. Webinar ID number is 91900566041, and the passcode is 231475. If you're in the Zoom room already, please race, press star nine to raise your hand and star six to unmute to speak.
So to clarify, Tony, about why you press star nine, that's only when you're called in as opposed to when you're in the Zoom room as.
Oh, sorry.
Okay, so the only people in the room right now are Zoomers, so. Probably is a new man. Coin and found in the dictionary. Blurb. Okay. I, you know, I found. Okay, so Mr. Sulfaro. How much time to provide that information and actually do the striping?
Well, we can do the striping as soon as the weather is consistent. We're looking at a 70-degree date tomorrow, so things are looking up. So I think within the next week or so, this striping will be completed. I'll be able to photograph and get, get that information back to you.
Okay, so say is three weeks a good?
That's very good.
Okay, so I am going to therefore make a motion to close this application, give you three weeks to submit that material, okay?
Very good.
So a motion to close, Tony.
Chair Promata? Vice Chair Shonda?
Hi.
Commissioner Otley Brown?
Hi.
Commissioner Sheppa?
Hi.
Commissioner Shabetta?
Hi.
His application is closed for decision. Yay, thank you very much, Mr. Sulfaro.
Will you advise me of the decision date?
Yeah, definitely. We'll send you an email. We'll send you an email with an agenda.
Thank you very much.
Okay. We'll send you an email first, sorry. Item number 17, 2191 BZ, 2407, 2417, Lyndon Boulevard, Brooklyn. What time is it? 1:21.
Same problem that we.
Yeah, we're gonna have to go back somewhere.
Yeah. Unfortunately. It's the time already in. Are you expecting anyone else?
Um, I see Richardson. I'm not, I don't know if he's going to speak, the applicant, the owner should be here. And just in case there are any comments on the Lumen's diagram, Giuseppe and Joseph are also the architects for that.
Is Mr. Demato part of your team?
Yes, Joseph and Giuseppe.
Okay.
Giuseppe's on.
Okay.
Joseph is on as well.
Okay, raise your right hands to, do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board and to respond honestly to the board member questions?
Yes, I do.
I do.
All right, good morning. Phan Baton from Sheldon Mobell PCT for the applicant. We attended the review session and heard the board's concerns and views of the application. Prior to any close later today, this afternoon, I'd like to address a few issues at this hearing. So regarding the common law, I'm sorry, the common zoning law issue, there was no intent to mislead the board, and we apologize if it came across like that. In the 1991 slash 1995 variance, by the time of the grant, there was, the lots were commonly owned. In the resolution, there was a mention of an application proposing to expand the auto sales lot to include trucks, but that was eliminated from the proposal. However, in the 2007 resolution, I noted that in response to the noted concerns, the applicant proceeded to bring the site into compliance and provided photographs into the record reflecting, one, that the site and the adjacent site have been cleaned up. So we apologize if it came off that we were trying to mislead the board. That wasn't the intent. It was public information regarding the ownership. We submitted the photographs at the request of Deputy Director Matias to show the history of the site. That's why we provided those. And I know that the 1980s tax photo showed that these adjacent lots were used as. Pretty much, I think, dead storage prior to the, the current owners purchasing the site. Regarding the impact of the common ownership, we can submit a legal memo for the record, depending on.
What's the le, what's the legal record, the legal memo for?
Regarding if the addition of these, the common ownership of these lots impact the variance, even if it is not the same zoning lot.
Why are we talking about the same zoning lot stuff again?
For the variance.
But why?
Because the variance was on the zoning line. We believe that the, if DOB wants to shut down the adjacent site, it's, it's not a permitted use, and the applicant understands that the DOB has control over that and is not subject to the jurisdiction, subject to this application and the jurisdiction of the board.
So. I'm, I'm, I'm thinking you shouldn't be going down this path, right? We've had 30 years of this owner. Having complete disdain for any regulation preventing the illegal use of the adjoining lot that they own for a continuation of this use. So to make legal arguments about whether or not it has an impact on the variance, et cetera, is, is just. I don't even know what words to use exactly. You're not hearing how. Disturbed the board is by the activities of this owner, and you're not hearing, and you know, you know this already, that whether or not it's on the same zoning lot. Is viewed by the board as having an impact on the need for a variance, even when you've got a teeny weeny site that's only 20 feet wide. If it's owned in common with an adjacent teeny weeny 20-foot wide site, it's viewed as not ha, not suffering the hardship that the 21, 20-foot standalone site is. This is a 100 by 120-foot wide lot, adjacent to 100 by 120-foot wide lot, so I would appreciate if you. Not waste the board's time with a legal memo on that subject when you know so well that that's the board's position, so. Really. Anyway, okay, continue.
The board raised the continuous use as a threshold item. I'd just like to discuss this, which I don't believe the continuous use for this specific application should be a threshold, as it's not a statutory requirement to show proof of continued use for a post-1961 variance. And I know it didn't seem that there was clarity amongst the board either, but I'd just like to know for the record, for the statutory requirement for 1-073 of the board's rules. For an application for a post-1961 variance, there's no mention of a proof of continued use. That's for a pre-1961 and 11411 case where it's a requirement to show proof of continued use, so. The variance is different than the non-conforming use. And if this was just by, it's in, it's in the VSS rules of practice and procedure.
What, what section are you citing?
So in 1-07.3 filing period for an extension of term. For an applicant, so it's 1-07.3B3, where more than two years after, but less than 10 years after the expiration of a term. So in sub two, it says applications for pre-1961 bulk grants or post-1961 variances and special permits, where the grant is limited to a term that is specified only as a condition in the board's resolution, may be filed on the SOC calendar. As an amendment to modify such term or condition provided that the applicant requests a waiver under the subparagraph in the application. The continued use comes from sub one, which is says that applications for pre-1961 use grants filed pursuant to ZR 11411 may be filed if you ask for a waiver. And then it says the applicant must demonstrate that the use has been continuous since the expiration of a term and substantial prejudice would result without such a waiver.
We'll look into that, not sure, okay.
So and if it was to show that the, there is an intent, I mean, there is an intent for the applicant, for the applicant to continue this use because they filed the application at BSA. I know, albeit, it had been a few years after it expired, but they, they filed, and by the time of the question of, you know, the two years, we're already at BSA. And there had been a liaison who was filing the application on behalf of the owner. This is.
Slow down. When were you already at BSA? By what date?
2017. I believe it was May or June 2017. I would just have to double check that.
So this expired, last one expired in March of 2015, so it was filed May of 2017.
May or June.
That's May or June. That's already two years past.
No, 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 it was, it was July 1917.
So it was after the two years, so that's why we fell into the category of B3 sub two.
I, I don't have time to look at the rules. What I, what we've all looked at is the behavior. So how do you respond to that? You can't, is the answer, probably.
You know, there's the pass at the site, and the owners are aware of the, the. You know, there's the past of the site, and the owners are aware of the, the board's comments, but you can't assume that they would be bad actors for the future, and I think this.
Based on what? I'm sorry, I'm sorry. We cannot assume, it's not assumption, we are seeing the action in play. We're not making any assumptions, since nineteen ninety-five, it's been the same owner. And since nineteen ninety-five, the use has been there, and it has not responded to any of the prior comments, which has been consistent with every prior board approval. And it has reverted back to its old self, it's, we're not assuming, it's based on facts.
I just want to add, uh, I, I don't know if there's any reason to debate this. Uh, we're not gonna agree, it seems like the, uh, you're, we're not going to agree that, uh, this is a bad actor, we, the board believes it's a bad actor, and I doubt that the applicant's going to acknowledge that. So, um, I'm not sure how much longer we should let this go on for, we've stated our position.
I agree. All right, but I do want to give the applicant an opportunity to be heard before we close this. So, uh, anything else you want to add?
If the board would be open to, if closing, if we just provide, if the, if the applicants fix all the site conditions, will the be, the board be willing to review a submission?
I, I, I don't know what it is that this applicant could do sort of what's described as by Commissioner Shebetta, as some kind of magical act that would prove to us that going forward, they won't behave exactly as they have done for the last thirty years with enormous disdain for the law and for the board's conditions, which they have never, ever complied with, ever. So I'm not sure what they would have to do, that's, they have to put their heads together and persuade us, um, with, with very powerful materials, I have no idea what that would be. And we're not going to advise them anymore, because we've been at this already said since July of twenty seventeen, right? So, um, you know, that's really for your client and you, you to advise them, but I've run out of ideas for how to advise them, we've been going back and forth on this and gotten nowhere in all of, and they obviously don't take us seriously, because they've made no effort to show that they take us seriously, ever, in thirty years, so.
They're here, I understand, they're here now, but the board could potentially do a short leash, right?
No leash, the short leash, what's the short leash about? They insist on constantly, um, thwarting our efforts and ignoring our direction, not to mention the, the law with respect to the adjoining lots, which even their counsel says it's none of your business what goes on in the adjoining lots, even though it's the same property owner. So they can hear us angry, uh, fed up with their behavior, and there's a point at which the, um, um, in a, in a legal actor, needs to be stopped from pursuing their illegal activities, this might be it, so.
We'll leave the public.
It's your job to work with your client and figure out if there is a solution that might persuade the board after we close, but just to let the property owner know that when we close on a note like this, it means we are likely to vote against the application, which means that going forward, your activities on this site, as they have been on the adjoining site, will be viewed as will become illegal, and that all enforcement actions, and that this board will contact all the different enforcement agencies to enforce against your acti, illegal activity, that this is your choice as a property. So, um, okay. So, uh, any other, anything else anybody wants to say, otherwise we go to the public?
Let's throw this ad, I'm sorry, may I move forward?
Yeah.
This item is twenty-one ninety-one BZ, twenty-four oh seven, twenty-four seventeen, Lyndon Boulevard, Brooklyn. So if you want to call in, it's six-four-six, five-five-eight, eight-six-five-six, Zoom webinar ID number is nine-one-nine, zero-zero-five-six, six-zero-four-one, and the passcode, if you need it, is two-three-one, four-seven-five. And, um, to raise your hand, you dial star nine if you've called in, right? And star six to unmute.
Yes. No, I don't know that we've ever had testimony on this. Um.
There's an individual in the waiting room named Keisha Martin.
If that person would like to speak on this case, please raise your Zoom hand. Um, she might be for the, uh, next case, don't know, but she hasn't wait, raised the hand, right? Okay, so, you know, I think the neighbors are, oh, well, actually, I shouldn't say that we haven't had testimony on this, there is one after the next complaint against the site by neighbors. And that appears on the DOB website, so you can just read all the ECB. Um, so it's not exactly, it's like it's a secret that this has been, um, an annoying, uh, use, and it's probable that the neighbors have just given up because the owners refuse to bring it into compliance, and so what, what can the neighbors do? So. Okay, so then I would, um, any other comments from commissioners? Last chance for applicant to say something, applicant's rep. Okay, Ms. Baton, you want to add anything, otherwise I'm gonna close the hearing. No. Okay, so I'm gonna close the hearing, uh, motion to close.
Chair Promata?
Hi.
Vice Chair Shonda?
Hi.
Commissioner Hartley Brown?
Hi.
Commissioner Sheppa?
Hi.
Commissioner Shebetta?
Hi.
And I'll discuss with staff how much time we should give before the decision date, and then we'll let you know what that is, okay?
Okay, so this concludes the public hearing for April twelfth, twenty twenty-one, the ten AM session. Um, it is one-thirty-seven, when do you wish to resume, two o'clock? Uh, we'll have to come in at two o'clock anyway.
And then.
We'll take a break.
Give another break, because it's not really enough time for a real break, okay?
Okay.
Thank you, everybody, back at two on the other phone call, and Ms. Martin called in, um, we're leaving this and going to another hearing. But you'll see on our calendar what the dial-in number is, if that's your case. Okay. Thank you, everyone.